Do you know?
Okay.
I'm good.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
Thank you.
We're better in the dark.
You feel more comfortable.
Well, I have anyway.
You lost ten years.
Exactly, thank you. Anyway, we'll bring the meeting to order here a little bit early, so we'll get going. Just here on Wednesday, November 7th, we're here on a Wednesday because yesterday was Election Day. And we have a pretty full agenda, so we'll get right into it. Our first one is a public hearing. This is for the Monaco Realty LLC. This is an application for a site development plan amendment, tree removal permits, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, thirteen station place. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good afternoon. I just want to give a general plan.
On the record, you are.
For the record, I'm... Please, hold on.
There is no record.
Michael, you know me. Okay.
But are you still here?
I'm still here. Wait, let me check again. No, no, pretty sure. It's a five-point-one acre site. We're planning on taking the existing buildings, joining them together, so that they become one big building. Provided, as you know, we provided an area for hydrology, the additional runoff that is created by the parking lot and the addition that's put in the middle. Things that are going away are things like this garage in the back that's going to go away. I think there might be another one over here, but I'm not sure completely. But what you see is what's going to be on the site. There is some pavement issues, and we have taken some, and we land... We've, well, we took some spaces away that we could put in, in this area right here.
Well, could you just quickly summarize the project, just because it is a public hearing? Just in case there's anyone here who's interested.
This is a project which is going to include a facilities downstairs in the building for a restaurant.
Right.
The other side is going to be retail, that's downstairs. Upstairs is going to be all office.
Right.
There's no residential in this at all. It's all office building.
So it's a conversion of two existing buildings, and then you're building the...
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to bring them together, two existing buildings together, rather than building a brand-new everything. We're going to keep what's there and just join them together, and then open them up so they'll be useful for an office and a restaurant and everything else.
Yep.
We've provided an infiltration chamber area, which is going to be underneath this right here, which is sitting area for possibly the sitting area for the restaurant that's going to go there, an outdoor area, which would be nice. And we've provided the handicap spaces, as you can see, we're in here. Which is, seems to disappear. I don't know why, but I have more.
If a restaurant doesn't come in, is that just going to be grass, or are they still going to build a patio?
There's two reasons why that might end up being grass. And the reason's being that the restaurant might say, "No, we don't want an outdoor area." And then it would be grass. Right now, it's proposed as impervious, or impervious pavers, meaning that the water will run down into them, rather than create a whole nother... It doesn't allow us to call it lawn. We still have a CN value of eighty-five, which is still relatively high. But in this case, we actually called it a CN of ninety-eight, and called it as if it was impervious, so there wouldn't be any questions about how we were handling it. But that's in the report.
If you go between grass and the pavers, you're still good to go, no matter which one you do?
Yeah, pavement would be ninety-eight.
Okay.
We handle that as eighty-five. Grass, decent condition, most of the grass that's around is in decent condition, is like sixty, or sixty-one. So it's almost like, almost like a, I like a percentage, but it's not. What is it? The full impervious surface would be ninety-eight, yes.
I wouldn't recommend putting impervious on top of the drywells. I would show them as it be a flagstone patio, that's what I put on my memo.
Well, yeah, we're going to make it impervious pavers.
You have the drywells below, which are taking water from the site.
Right.
And then you have water above, and it's going to overtax the system, so...
It's all included. We did all the...
I disagree with that, but I would make it patio, flagstone patio. That's what the architectural plan shows.
Well, it can be a flagstone patio, that's fine. We can seal it off.
As far as that's what it is, I have no problem with that.
We have it either way. If you want a flagstone patio, it's a flagstone patio.
Chuck shows.
It was handled that way anyway, in the report, so...
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah, it was, it was...
Yeah, it's not going to be grass.
It was handled as if it was ninety-eight, rather than do it as eighty-five.
But why did you do it at ninety-eight? Or ninety-eight just to be safe?
Yeah, yeah.
Ninety-eight would, is what it would be if it's patio.
Yeah.
Flagstone patio is ninety-eight. At least I don't include the little small areas of sand, which doesn't collect much of that.
No, no, we'd have to put a whole layer of gravel underneath it.
It's impervious, it will be treated, it's impervious, it will be constructed, it's impervious.
Yeah, okay. It shows that, and here comes the crux of the matter. We were talking about the turning radius of a thirty-foot truck, and we provided an area for it to back up and everything else. The problem that we have, of course, is a very large area that is required for a thirty-foot truck. It makes it a little bit more difficult. And a little bit more, more pavement than we want to put out there. So what we need to do now is look at the alternative, which Mr. Napoli has.
Have we received input from the Millwood Fire Department yet, also on their truck?
No, we have not, we have not worked with them.
So we need that as well, right?
Yeah, their truck, I...
But it's in my memo.
Yes, it is, it is in his memo. We can handle everything in a memo. The question is where we want to go with this from now. But everything in a memo is handable. I mean, this is a very flat site, it's not a hilly site, it's not a difficult site. It's very flat. We're just looking to pave it and create something that can be used, you know, consumed by the consumer.
So I'm Chuck Napoli, a former fire truck driver.
Your expertise is just as that. Great.
Yeah, totally. They demoted me because I didn't know the directions and all the streets in town, so I became a traffic guy with the patrol.
Can you check and see if that's on?
I don't think it's on.
Oh, no, it's not.
Why didn't you touch anything, though?
Let me have it.
There you go.
Now it's on?
I don't know.
Yeah, now it's on, yep.
Chuck Napoli, former fire truck driver. The reason I bring that up is because as a member of the Chappaqua Fire Department, and being on the next door to the firehouse in my first office, that was usually on every call. So they decided to put me in the driver's seat until I didn't know where the roads were, and they said, "Well, we'll let somebody else handle that." My job was to direct traffic. My point of making here is that, as the engineers were told to look at turning radiuses and truck radiuses, they treated that truck, this truck, that one, as if it were traffic. If it were fire, we wouldn't stay on that side of the road or that side of the road. We might even go across the road. But more importantly, looking at it as if it's traffic and having a truck turn to here, and then because one of the requirements was to have the fire truck drive out, I'm saying that that's not the most reasonable thing. This is not that great for a garbage truck, since the dumpster is over here. And I would like to suggest you think about this layout for traffic, and the next one I'm going to show you, okay? If...
Chuck?
Yes, sir.
I can't see the top of that drawing. Could you scroll it down a little bit?
Yeah. I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to do it this way. And there were a couple of comments that this particular layout of parking is not the same as the original proposed because of our returning radiuses. So we're looking, this is where the garbage truck or the garbage disposal would be, or a place for a truck to back out and make a three-point turn. What it does do is create a lot more pavement, and the whole idea was to reduce as much pavement as possible on this particular design. So let's go to the next one. Oops.
Nope, moving back.
This is a new system, folks. Why?
Why is it jumping backwards?
There we go.
There you go.
So here's another way of looking at a truck movement, whether it be a garbage truck or a fire truck. We would go on this side and just drive in to pick up the garbage. Or if we were fighting a fire, we'd probably stay right here and drag the hoses over. We have a two-story building, I don't think we need the big ladder trucks, so forth. So I'm just pointing out that there might be two ways to look at truck movements, and then we'll just move on to some of the other issues.
Do you, the proposed truck can pick up the garbage. Is this one of those units, I don't know what they're called, where they back up to the dumpster?
They either back up or drive in.
Well, it depends on the truck, right?
Yeah. So we could do the same with this. This fellow, this fellow could go here and go into that thing and back up, or he could drive straight in on this side of the road and go straight in and pick up.
I don't, I guess, but I don't...
Let me go back. Here's, here's why I'm sticking with this. I like this amount of non-pavement.
I understand, I understand that. I just, yes, I don't see how that truck backs in, backs up, and then makes a turn back out.
Well, he would go on this side. He would be...
I know, but, sorry. When he's backed into the position to pick up...
Yeah.
How does he then make the left turn to come back out? I just, I'm not sure there's room, you don't show that movement.
If this guy can get in, he could also get out. If this, if this is the turning radius of a truck, whether he's here or here, he'll pull in and pull out.
But he's either backing in or backing out. I mean, he would...
You're not, you're not showing the turning left movement to back into the turn right and then to come out again.
You got to show him coming out forward.
Yeah, you're not, you're not showing that.
Because I can visualize it.
Right, that's a busy road. That's a state road.
These are three-point, they'll turn up there.
I don't know, yeah, I'm not sure you can, I'm not sure you can make it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we looked, well...
Well, that's the other one.
Here's, this is the original where he's driving in, and at that point, he's not bothering anything with this corner. If he's driving in, this is the garbage truck. This is off again, I think.
That's on.
If this were, if this...
Is that your proposed plan?
No. The proposed plan is the one with a lot of planting in this corner.
So that's not your preferred decision?
Preferred plan?
No.
Okay, so that's not useful to me.
I'm asking, I'm asking for an opinion, yes.
I'm giving you one.
Go ahead.
I don't, I think you should take your preferred plan and show the movements on that, because I just don't, I don't see how they can make it back out again without backing in or backing out, that's all.
Well, everybody has to back in or back out.
Well, you're not going to back out onto the station road.
No, no, no. You have to make, you have to make some kind of three-point turn on this property.
Yes, I'm not sure I see how that works, so I'm just asking for the drawing, that's all.
Yeah.
We can move on, and we just need to see the...
While we're on the same subject, I don't think a fire truck... There'd be a whole lot of guys out on the street. I mean, if a fire truck has to back out, there's plenty of people stopping traffic for a fire truck.
So Chuck, when it comes to fire trucks, I think we let the fire department make that decision, so we can just pass on that. Because we're not going to, if they say yes, then we're going to say yes, if they say no, we'll say no.
Well, I only bring it up because it was, it was on the list.
It was on my memo, exactly.
It was on the memo, Tom said.
But we need the fire department to take a look.
Right, and Chuck, I do want to add, you kind of brushed over the whole parking requirements. It was different on one plan than another. There were, the issue is, you're here tonight for a public hearing, so we're looking at an application, and it should be as complete as possible. The most recent site plan drawing that you submitted in regards to this public hearing does not identify the parking spaces. It doesn't provide enough information, as indicated in my review, so that I can confirm everything for the planning board to say, "Go ahead." So I noticed it was on your last plan, but not on this plan, so I'm just asking for consistency between your submissions, particularly this one, because this is your public hearing.
Fine. Are we here, parking? Part of the drawings are Michael's and part of the drawings are by...
I understand, I understand. I'm asking for better coordination between you two.
Right, especially because you're asking us for land banking as well and parking.
Well, and that was the problem. I couldn't identify the spaces that they were looking to land bank. I had to confirm the amount of spaces that were required for the town, cove to the different uses. The restaurant parking is required for gross floor area of restaurants. They are separated by dining area versus kitchen area. And I didn't have enough information on the plan to understand what he was counting on this site plan as opposed to the last site plan that came in. And so I need to verify all of that, because we have a decision to make about the type of parking, so the land and parking.
Yeah, but not only that, he just said five minutes ago, there's another plan he had, I never saw it.
Correct.
I mean, I can review something if I don't have the plan. Yeah, Michael's plan, you showed another plan, you never saw it.
The preferred one.
The other one you just showed us. What's the other one you just showed?
You just said the other, what was your preferred?
The other one was your preferred.
Well, that was, that was a study of just the turning movements.
But the turning movements were not shown completely. You need it on this one. That doesn't show a complete turning movement.
And the bottom line, Chuck? Truck has to back out forward. It's like Tom said and Bob said, there's too much traffic, it's not a dead-end road, there's a lot of volume on that road, it's got to pull out forward.
We understand that. I just think the fire truck having to back out would be...
Talking about fire trucks, talking about delivery trucks and garbage trucks.
Every other truck is going to come into this site, whether they come in on this side and turn, and back up into that area.
That's imperative.
Right.
Or come out, and they're all going to drive out.
Can I, can I just make the, what I, just my suggestion before? We can talk about this till we're blue in the face, and I'm getting there. What we ought to do instead, I think, is just wait for you to provide the drawing with the turning movements on it for your preferred plan, which we don't have yet, and that'll settle it for us.
All right.
And we can move on then, I think.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with that. I'd like to add to it that also it would be helpful to, instead of having curves where the truck goes in, because if you, that means you have to position whatever they're going to try and pick up on an angle, because the curves you had before don't allow the truck to go in straight and knife it. Now, if you do what you were proposing to do as a difference, you know, then the truck, once it makes the turn to the left, you know, it can, it can back in at least and get the stuff, or it could, if it's in another position, go in forward. And that almost makes it.
This guy is turning, and he's perpendicular at that point.
Well, not really. He's off by about three feet, but let's, but, so you have to coordinate it, you have to get it right, and you have to show that it really works. And where is the, where is the garbage bin going to be situated to be picked up?
And then, of course, if, as you mentioned before, if you're going to change the planting plan, because this is your preferred approach, then show us what the planting plan is as well.
And it's imperative, and I have to say this, with your parking, that your turning radius for the trucks, whether it be garbage trucks or delivery trucks, aren't bumping into any of the parking spaces, because if there's cars parking in there, you're not going to be able to circulate.
Well, they're not, no, they're not. This happens to be a two-way road.
Here we are, now I am blue in the face. Can we just move on?
What's the next color?
I mean, Sabrina's right, and we'll know that when we see it.
Chuck, will you put up your landscape plan, because I'm going to make us move on and get off of... Yeah, that's what I'm going on. Can you refresh my memory where your septic field is, and your tanks, and stuff like that? The septic fields are all across the back, right here, they're galleys. All underneath the parking. Yeah. Well, there's a couple of them that are, well, pretty much. And then, and then there's another issue that, right here, is where all the drainage is going to a catch, kind of... Yeah, so that's stormwater over there. Under there, and then galleys are there. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a copy on that subject? Do you have a copy of the memo that we received today from the DEP?
I just got it today, yeah.
So we have to make sure that we're okay with those galley issues in terms of location, a septic, and some concerns that they raised.
Can we talk about that for a minute? Because they said a hundred feet from the galleys to the subsurface. And that's, that's not what we were understanding.
Can I explain that memo from the DEP? I mean, I don't understand, Steve and I were having discussions about it before. She goes through this whole thing about setbacks and distances, but that's not even in the...
We're not in the watershed.
It's not even a watershed, so none of those are applicable in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, it was very confusing.
I mean, they're not applicable.
It says it falls outside of DEP's jurisdiction.
Yes.
It's going to fall back down to the Wichita County rules and regs, which is fifty feet, as opposed to a hundred.
What that is, is that we know we have to be a fifty-foot radius away from those things. We are.
Okay.
Not the one hundred.
Well, it's always good to receive correspondence from the city. As irrelevant as my...
Even though it's not applicable.
Now, we just got that memo today, and I, we got the staff's memo on Monday afternoon, so we've been trying to catch up and correct as much as we could. I worked on the landscape plan with Mr. Coleman, and we've come up with a new, a new set of specifications for the kinds of trees, and picked up some of the issues about what tree is being moved, and we'll be putting back and trying to keep it along the sidewalk, and that's all I'm taking care of, I would think. This tree is going away, this tree is going away, that tree is going away. This one is not being replaced. This one and this one are being replaced with the same thing with Bradford pears that would match the streetscape, landscape plans. So as far as some of the comments on the landscape plan, that's what that is. As far as lighting is concerned...
The city also offered irrelevant comments on the planting plan, too. They also offered comments on the planting plan.
Yeah, I know, they did. I would refer that to Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman is in agreement with what we've got now. What we also have is lighting, some lighting issues that have come up. This was our light fixture, it's going to be in the parking lot. Here's what happened. I sent this off to the lighting engineers. They're going to do their photometrics of how many poles I need. I don't have that for tonight. I sent it out yesterday, and, but we do have the type and the height, and the temperature, and the LED requirements of the light. We have the shape of the light, and we have how it's mounted. It's a direct burial pole, and we have half of the details that were requested. We do not have the photometrics, which would determine how many I have and where are they put. Is that four thousand K correct? Yeah, well, they come between three, four, five, and six. Because we've been hovering around twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven hundred. So if you're having engineers do stuff on four thousand, they want to talk to about twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Correct.
Is that your, okay.
Yes, that's our standard. And this pole also indicates that it's a hundred-and-fifty watt incandescent, or you're going to use...
That is, that's after, the drawing that you're looking at here is after the memo that I got two days ago. I've corrected, I've corrected that.
Those, I mean, that's planned, that's not what I reviewed.
Right, so this is my advice to the point at this point.
You edited it after mine.
I would advise the board to ask if anybody is in the audience that wishes to speak on the application, because it is a public hearing. I suggest that the board ask that question here from the public, and then continue the public hearing, and then the application work to satisfy comments and conditions tonight.
And get the drawings up to date with...
Correct, correct. Because we want, we want him to move forward in an expeditious manner. There's no sense in debating every little thing here based on information that staff hasn't reviewed. He appears to understand what staff needs with the comments that have been heard tonight. Let's just try and move this forward and continue the public hearing.
We're answering the staff review.
But we don't have the documents here when you're answering, so we have inconsistency with plans, so we have to have those plans in place.
Then I make a request.
Sure.
To, if you want to review the drawings again, give us, give us a little more time to make any corrections. But if we make the corrections and bring it back, we're in the same spot. You got a drawing based on corrections, but it's not the drawing that was submitted. So I need a little more, I need a little more time to make the corrections, submit the drawing so that they can review it.
You can't make those corrections after it's been reviewed and after we've received all the information. None of us have the information, and so we have a very non-useful conversation. So the best thing is to meet with staff. You have the memos, I think this pretty much sets forth the issues and concerns.
Yeah.
Do these, make a, you know, set up a consistent plan, and we should be set.
May I, I agree with that, but also, if I could maybe make a suggestion, whether the board is willing to do this, thinks it's appropriate or not, we'll find out. But are there, are there items here in this part of the application that what we're looking at is still the proposed application? For instance, the architecture of the building, the lamp style? Because it would be a shame to wait another two weeks or four weeks to have that conversation, when we could have it now and maybe help you advance your application for those things. Is that appropriate for the board? Or would you rather wait?
I think what would be more useful, perhaps, is if the applicant has any issues or questions on any of the issues that have been raised by staff, whether it's Steve, Sabrina, or Bob. That, I think we should take that time now. I think we should also, by the way, is there anyone here even remotely interested in this application in the public? Okay, so we're not ruining anyone's evening, so...
If, can I then make a suggestion? If this is a conversation between the applicant and the staff, I don't think the board has to sit and be part of that unless we want to have comments in support of that. That's something that you could have in a working session tomorrow if you choose. We have other applicants who are here, and they have applications which are, I presume, to be complete, and perhaps we ought to move on to those.
Yeah, I think we should take, are there any issues, though, substantive issues, that you had that perhaps we should referee and just tell you where we are? Unless you, I mean, Michael indicated that basically everything was doable in Bob's memo and Sabrina's memo. I'm hearing, I think, that you're okay with Steve's memo. But if there are any issues, this is the time that you should raise them and say, "Well, wait a second, we can't do that, that doesn't work." "We disagree," or whatever. Other than that, we assume that, to Tom's point, you'll go forward and draw up the plans and get them into us, and then staff will have it reviewed, and we'll move forward.
No problem. I just didn't have time to, and even if I did have time to fix, this shouldn't be a public hearing, in that point, because...
Correct.
It is premature, it is premature for the public hearing.
Because we're still answering questions. We get them a day before the meeting, and then we show up with differences, and we're talking about the differences, making requests shouldn't be a public.
Well, I don't remember that we pushed to have the public hearing.
Say again?
I don't think, I don't remember that we pushed to have the public hearing.
No, I think it was your pushing. We were trying to expedite it for you.
You know me, I'm not a pusher. You said, you know, "We'll set it up for September." In August, you said, "Let's set it up in September," so we showed up in September. But we didn't make the September meeting, so we waited another whole month, and here we are, getting...
Well, if I may, in that light, if you had all that extra time, one would expect that...
Yeah, except we didn't get the memo until two days ago. So...
But, but you're showing...
I would like to work with...
But you're showing, you're showing drawings that are or aren't your application, it's, let's just, let's just...
So it shouldn't be a public meeting. Let's forget about the public meeting, then, let's just go on...
We've opened it, so we'll continue.
Public hearing.
We'll continue.
We will continue the public hearing.
So then we'll play the game of public meeting, and...
Well, just a minute, just a minute. It's not a game. Well, just keep patient with me for a second. You don't want to shut down the public hearing, because if you do, then to re-notice it is, how many days? Thirty?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay? So I think enough on that, all right?
Okay, so there are some things for, like the existing storm sewer in the road. I mean, it's there, and we know where it is, and we've got, and the water main is in the road. We know where the, we know where they are, and we know the sizes, but I think that's something that I can work with staff on establishing.
Yes, do it.
It should be shown. Every other site plan I've ever reviewed, they show all of it.
Show what you want.
Why not a big deal to show? We have all the plans here.
We know it, it's right there, we'll show it.
You don't show the pipe, you don't show the water main. It's incomplete.
Yeah, well...
You're going to have manhole covers, do you need manhole covers out of the parking lot?
But Chuck, on this...
This is not a substantive thing.
Yeah, exactly. Are there substantive issues? I mean, these are things that are just standard that have to be shown on the plan. We don't really frankly referee on those things, it's just staff, that's a requirement before it really comes to us. So the issue is, I mean, if you came back and said, "Well, we have to have seven thousand Kelvin for these lights," you don't understand. It's like, okay, let's hear about that. But unless there's something like this, that's really substantive, where there's an issue where you think that you can't comply or should not comply, will ruin the application, let us know. Otherwise, let's move on, we'll close this, we'll see...
Let's talk about the parking, because we do, we worked really hard on the parking issue. And there's, again, there's a conversation about the parking that I'd like to pursue. And it happens to be, this is hard to work, this is... You can just click the things up top, Chuck. You see those little tabs? Yeah, those two. You just click on one of those, it'll bring up the drawing that you're looking for. Right. When it comes to parking, I'd like to talk about the solar plant. And what we've done is taken two existing buildings, connected the two with a utility stack or utility structure. And in that, there's bathrooms, there's stairways, there's corridors, and there's stuff. And then we calculate, so we could calculate the parking for... And, and then we calculate, so we could calculate the parking for the whole building, including all of that, and it would increase the amount of parking and we can supply that parking. What I'm thinking is, is why do we have to provide parking for the bathrooms, for the, you know, for the future kitchens, for the stairway, for the hallway, when in fact, if we were gonna make a restaurant here, what we would do to determine loading of the, of occupants, we would take the square footage of the dining area only and that establishes the number of seats in that area.
Don't think so.
So, the, the problem with that, Chuck, is, is, is I don't necessarily disagree with your thinking, but the town code parking requirement for restaurant use looks at gross floor area of the restaurant, which includes the kitchen and the bathrooms and gross floor area. I understand what you're asking for, you're also asking for land banking of portions of that requirement. You have not provided me with enough information on a site plan for me to determine whether or not your calculations compared to what the calculations are per the code are worth this board's consideration. So, I don't know, I, because it is an already approved use in the town code, this board cannot change that requirement. It is worth consideration giving, given what we are, the reality of the situation and too much parking. But I think we need to see what the numbers are per the town code and really, really give some thought to what you are requesting, which I do not think is unreal. The question is, can we, can we go down that road in accordance with the town code?
No, can't.
So then that answer to you is you need to provide your parking numbers.
The reason I suggest that is that if we do do the calculations according to town code, we end up with pretty much the, the, the number of 25 or 26, maybe 27 spaces, anyway. And, and, and so, there is, there is a, and Michael.
But that's what you're gonna have to prove out and show and then from there, we'll work backwards into, to your preferred plan, which will be land banking.
Twenty-seven minus nine, you need to provide 18. And then if you're looking at shared uses, which you are asking to make the upstairs office instead of apartments, the difference between hours of use between office and a restaurant, you know, these are all, that's all within the ability of the planning board to consider, but you have not provided any information regarding that. And so again, this discussion, to preserve the timing, the time tonight, I would say happy to consider alternatives and trying to fit your parking on site, but we need the baseline information so we know what we're working with and I can speak with council about trying to work around the existing code in what we're trying to do.
Right, I wanna work with you, which is.
Yeah, but I don't think I'm asking for that much work. I'm just, I mean, what we've done.
But I'm telling you, it's going to take that much work to get you to the point where you want to be. I've looked at this, Chuck.
Yeah.
You've looked at it.
I have looked at this, this.
That's the total area.
I, I, I understand that, I understand that, but I'm not doing that for you.
So you're gonna have to lay it out on a plan and then also your preferred plan where you wanna land bank it and then we can work with you on it.
Well, we showed that, we showed that too. I, I, I'm really not getting it tonight.
Well, I'm sorry, Chuck. You and I have known each other a long time and you've done wonderful things in this town. I admire you for your architecture and for your dedication. In this particular case, I rely on our staff and our staff is not satisfied with the materials we have. It's okay to have a conversation about where you disagree, but if the staff is at a point where they can't come to a conclusion, then I think that we need to wait for you and the staff to work together and come back with a recommendation. At this point, talking about this parking thing to me is, we're just spinning our wheels again. It's like the turning radio.
Right. Well, I, I, so, so I shouldn't have brought that thought up, only to help you understand why, maybe we could get away with a land bank of that.
You understand, I understand that.
And Chuck, I, I will work with you, I will make as much practical suggestion to this planning board as far as land banking and everything you wanna do, but I need to pencil it out. This parking plan was submitted on your last site plan, or it was submitted with this plan, but the spaces were not identified. You did not identify the area of the land banking that you wanted to show, because land banking, the definition of land banking is you need to have the area. It was not on your current plan.
So, what do we do?
But this, this is the land banking right here, all of these spaces. Maybe I didn't write it.
And, and it was not, it was not identified on your plan, Chuck, because I don't know if that is nine spaces.
It is.
Then you need to, you need to identify the spaces and shade them.
So, yeah, you need to, you know, bring these, get this stuff together and we have another, we have meetings in December, so we'd love to get you through and done and we'll maintain the public hearing.
I have one, one question.
Sure.
Just point of information. Chuck, has the architectural review board looked at this? Have you been before them yet?
No.
No, you won't go until a building permit, unless you're referring it to them to examine it before you approve it.
Okay, thank you.
One, one last small question. Sabrina, you indicated, I believe, that there may be a wetland setback?
We had, we had looked, we had looked at that, the first initial plans that were submitted to this board, he had shown a wetland buffer on the plans but didn't speak to it, so I said, either talk to us about it or remove it from the plans. In fact, after talking with Steve and looking at, you know, GIS information, looking at the town codes, Steve can speak more fully to it, there is not a wetland on this site.
Not a wetland.
Or a buffer.
Or a buffer, correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. One less, one less issue there, great. Okay, can you get materials together? Janice, when do we need it for the second December meeting?
November 26th.
Okay.
For the December 18th meeting.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, but don't give me a memo on November 25th and expect, you know, because we're gonna set, submit drawings.
Well, well, let, let, let me say, Chuck?
Yeah.
If your memos are address staff comments, the parking comment has been there since the beginning.
And.
Okay, so, so, so it's, we try and get information back to the applicants in response to their submissions. Our, our, our response to these plans is to the board. We comment to the board about their plans submitted.
Right, there's no expectation that the applicant will address all of the comments in the memos that come out in advance of a meeting for that meeting. Those, those comments will be, would be expected to be addressed for the subsequent meeting.
And if we get to a certain level, usually those comments at a certain level are just, they're not substantive exactly and they can be conditioned in any kind of approval. So we do that all the time.
More of what I'm used to.
Sure.
Well, and again, I think that this was prematurely set for public hearing.
Fair enough, so we'll do it again, when?
December, which, 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you then.
Okay.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Yep, thank you, very thankful.
Okay, thank you. We move now to our next matter. This is an informal hearing for a new application. This is the Watson, Ray Lee Goldstein. This is an application for a subdivision amendment for a lot line amendment, 82 and 90 Orchard Bridge Road.
Please, please.
Okay, oh, not okay yet.
Sorry, the computer's charged.
We've had like 25 years, we've done it so long.
And we're actually getting rid of the mimeograph machine. Although I missed the smell.
Don't get rid of it too soon.
They're coming back.
Another five years, it's, it's not an antique, but it's something else.
It's a lot of patinos.
Good evening, uh, is this Parker?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Ben Watson, my wife is, and I resided 82 Orchard Bridge Road and I'm here talking with my neighbor Joe Goldstein, he and his wife reside at 90 Orchard Bridge Road. I believe we're here for approval of a lot line amendment, a subdivision portion of my property, and on the tax map as a parcel 800, 100 dot 8 dot 1 dot 14. The proposed subdivision is for me to convey a portion of that lot to Mr. Goldstein.
And so basically it's.
I don't have a pointer, sorry.
Well, dangerous watching.
You can borrow ours if you'd like.
So basically, you're, you're, uh, there, this, this piece right here, right?
Yes.
Behind, right, yeah, behind yours. So that's the, the parcel that you're proposing to convey.
Currently, I, this parcel right here where my primary residence is and this parcel here perpendicular to it are two separately taxed parcels, so we wanna divide this one, join these two and join those two.
Fine, okay, good.
Is there a why?
Why?
Well, I, I got this.
Is it conforming? Is it, so you can do it, are you just curious?
It's because I have raised two sons on this lovely lot, they are both out of the house and gone and my neighbor has two young children in a very small lot.
Gotcha.
And I'm happy to, yes, I said, sure.
She's being neighborly.
Being neighborly.
That's a great reason.
And it's kinda awkward for us to wrap around. Right now, his sewer connection is in my backyard, right around there, so he should have his own sewer connection.
That's the main reason.
We knew it would come out.
So, I know this is not a, this is an informal hearing, so we're here just to find out what we need to do to make this happen.
So, you wanna go first?
I have no comments.
Oh, well, I, I have some comments, 'cause I think what you wanna do is fine, I just need to confirm that all the numbers work out, your setbacks work out, and in order to do that, I need more information that compares your individual situations for your two lots and your one lot, and then what happens after you divide your one lot to your lot and your lot.
So before and after.
Before and after with all three lots. Right now I have the after situation.
Okay.
Okay, so I need you to expand that table per my memo and if there's any confusion, I'm happy to sit with you and show you.
That'd be very helpful.
What you, right, and I'm, and I'm happy to, to go through and help you out again, show you some other examples of, of lot line change tables, you know, to, to get the numbers right. My concern is that you have correct information on your plan in your survey, that we compare it with the information that the town has, that it's all in line with each other and that your end result is all compliant with the zoning code. So you have a little more work to do with the plans.
Okay.
Other than that, I'd say we're in good shape, but he needs to go back and fix that.
What is the zoning here, quarter acre or?
Quarter acre.
Okay, so, then we're gonna have, are we gonna have two lots that are a half acre? No, I don't think so, right?
No.
No, not quite.
In fact, my current quarter little property there is under.
Under a quarter?
Quarter acre right now.
Correct. So, it's actually, some of this will bring some of the non, pre-existing non-conforming situations on both of these lots into compliance.
Right, and those that are not grandfathered anyways.
Correct, and, and so, so I just need, you know, to understand what the changes are because we have to go through certain processes to make sure you maintain your compliance status, whether it is conforming or non-conforming, moving forward.
And we can't do anything now because it's unlisted, but we have to have these corrections before we can take any action on CCR?
Well, I think you can, to the extent there are any other agencies that have to sign off on this, I think you can authorize circulation notice of intent, subject to getting the information necessary to, to perform that circulation, so that can be done in between meetings.
Okay, and ultimately, might this not be an application that the board could waive jurisdiction on once we get these corrections?
I think that, that's up to the board as to, you know, the kinds of impacts.
You have the ability to.
It's an available mechanism to you.
Right.
One other thing to note is that with respect to, so Orchard Avenue in the back, that's a paper street, and there is a provision in the code that says that double frontage lots should be avoided. It's not a prohibition, but they should be avoided, but the fact that Orchard Avenue to the rear is, is a paper street, it's not a, it's not an improved right of way at this point, I don't think that's, you know, a concern.
Good point, though. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But we, we should capture that point for, you know, the resolution and everything.
Right, well, I said no further subdivision or development shall occur on the lots, I mean, those are all.
Right, which is fairly standard.
Yes.
While we do this.
It's all standard, there's nothing unusual about this request.
As a heads up to the applicant, would we be willing to waive jurisdiction once we get the corrected information in?
I wouldn't.
I would.
Sure. Okay, which will expedite things for you.
I'm sorry, what did, what did you just agree to do?
Oh, we haven't agreed to yet. We need the directions that you'll work on with Sabrina, but basically, we'll, we'll save going through a public hearing and all this, we'll just waive jurisdiction and you'll be done.
It's not a problem, usually the requirement is two chickens delivered every Christmas season and for five years and we're over.
My experience, I believe, with a town board and say, I'll do whatever you need me to do, give me whatever you think I need. We're not like that.
But anyway, it's really, it should, it should help you in expedite this.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Saves money, saves time.
So do you have a motion to authorize circulation notice of intent, subject to receipt of the information necessary to do that circulation?
Certainly do, don't we?
Yes, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very much, okay. Okay, we move now to our next item. This is an informal hearing for a new application. This is 767 King Street LLC, the Chiselhurst subdivision lot number six, application for a site plan amendment, steep slopes permit amendment, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, 767 King Street, New York Route 120.
Good evening. For the, for the record, my name is Stephen Rabel, I'm with the law firm of Calhoun Goldberg and Stout and I'm here on behalf of Gary and Samara Klein, who are the new owners of 767 King Street. Unfortunately, the Kleins couldn't be here, they wanted to be, but they had a personal call and flip that they couldn't get out of. But who I do have with me tonight is Lori Bappu and Glenn Cardova of Blazeman Coia Architecture, Dan Thorpe of LaGuardia Design Group and Alan Pilch of ALP Engineering. So what I'd like to do with the board's permission, because this is a bit of a unique property, is briefly walk you through some of the history of the site, and then I'd ask Lori to discuss with you how the house was designed and what the intentions were, and then Dan will walk you through the overall site plan. So this lot was created in 2001 in what was called the Chiselhurst subdivision, it was identified as Lot 4. It's about 12.9 acres in size, but the vast majority of the lot, 10.3 acres, is protected by a conservation easement. So that only leaves 2.6 acres of buildable area on the lot. In 2002, the previous owners of the property, the Basies, were granted a site development approval for a single-family house on the property. Subsequently, they pulled permits, they constructed a driveway and a bridge and they extended the waterline up to the site of the intended house. For whatever reason, they never completed the work on the site, they never built the house. But in 2011, the town issued them a determination that because they had completed substantial construction, meaning the driveway, the bridge and the waterline extension, they were grandfathered certain elements of their approval from 2002. Specifically, the 2002 100-foot wetland buffers. Now, the current standard is 150 foot, 150 feet, but we, discussing with staff and council and the general consensus is, so long as we meet certain requirements, the original 100-foot wetland buffer would still apply. What are the requirements? We have to meet modern stormwater, tree removal, all other elements of today's code and standards. And we have to locate the development specifically within the original 2002 clearing and disturbance limit line, which we do. So you might be asking, if we meet all those requirements, if we have the vested rights So you might be asking, if we meet all those requirements, if we have the vested rights and the grandfathering, why are we back here? And there's one element of the 2002 approval that triggers a planning board appearance, and that is the coverage. So the Kleins are proposing a single-family home that's larger in size than what was previously approved, and it increases coverage beyond what was approved in the O2 approval. So that approval, if you look at it, says if you go beyond this coverage figure, you have to come back to the planning board for what's essentially amended site development.
Building coverage and development coverage have gone over, both coverages.
Building coverage has gone over. I don't believe the development coverage has gone over.
Just building coverage.
I can't confirm that today.
Per the O2 approval, but I know Sabrina flagged the O1 Chiselhurst subdivision approval, correct?
Yes, the subdivision approval. The original subdivision approval was a conservation subdivision. The planning board identified specific coverages, both building and development, for each of the three lots that were to be developed for single-family homes. It was a seven-lot subdivision, so there's a lot of piecing together conservation lots versus buildable lots. Parcel four, which is this subject property, had a specific building envelope, as the applicant has stated, and there was a specified building coverage and development coverage for that building envelope, for that, for that lot. With, and that building envelope reflected the area in which that building could occur. The coverages as approved in your, in, in your subdivision resolution for the original subdivision, the final subdivision, were carried over into the original site plan application that was approved by the planning board. So the, the initial development was consistent with your approvals back at, with the final subdivision. I have yet to receive the information needed in the plans. It's not clear to me, there's some discrepancies between the architect's plans and engineer's plans, and trying to pull it all together to determine whether or not development coverage is over. Building coverage is over, that is a definitive request. Uncertain as to whether or not development coverage is.
So we know that we have to reconcile those numbers. We have to see how they match up to the O1 approval, and we'll get back to Sabrina and to you with the final development coverage figures. But what I would note is that if you look at the O1 approval, it closely tracks the language of the O2 approval, which is, if you exceed the coverage, you come back to the planning board. So procedurally, I would argue it's, it's the same process. So that's why we're here. Uh, what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Lori Babu of our Blaze McCooy Architects, and she'll take you through the elements of the single-family home we're proposing.
Okay, before I do that, I, I had a question that I'll, I'll present to Jennifer. And this goes back, we had a conversation earlier today. This goes back to the, the determination by the building inspector back in 2011 on this application. Prior owner, different application, different building. And of course, it seems to me that we have a subjective test here in terms of what is substantial construction. Devil's advocate, we have now a new application substantially bigger, um, probably much more cost involved, much more impact. Does this substantial construction, is this a movable test whereby when you have a different application for a different building, we start to look at something that's different and, and say, this is not substantial in connection with the overall project that is now presented in 2018 versus what was presented in 2004 and then updated in 2011? So, I mean, I think that's a threshold question that we need to understand, and how binding is that determination by the building inspector on this board, on the town, et cetera? Uh, so those are some threshold questions, I think, that we need to understand before we really, before, at least maybe, I, I start to really, uh, look at this. I certainly understand the applicant's position, I appreciate it, um, and I understand why they, why they believe they're here. But, um, to a certain extent, um, it, it seems, um, I'm uncomfortable with that, and, and being bound by something where I have basically now new regulations, new standards, and frankly, a new application. The application that was done before, that construction is now done. I think you could, someone might be able to take the view that that construction is over and done with. What we're starting with now is, that's existing, we have a driveway, we have water, we have a bridge. Now we're doing another project, and that project now is the home, anyway.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before Jennifer answers, your statement about that construction being done is not applicable whatsoever. There has been construction occurring on this property for this building lot in no way, shape, or form in accordance with what the planning board had approved as far as conditions of building permit, um, certificates of occupancy. That has not been fulfilled. So construction stopped, and the building permit was canceled.
Right.
The building construction was not completed.
Right, and, and again, we have, this evening, we have another application that we're looking at for an extension with, it seems to be similar situation. That was the Brandywine application, again, it was abandoned, new owners came in, and when they came in, we told them that they had to, even though that they had built out a road, a substantial road, a public, what was going to be a dedicated road, to public sta, road standards, uh, we said, "No, you abandoned it, it's been too much time, it's a new owner, new application, new lineup, new, new homes, et cetera." And they had to work within the regulations.
So, a lot of questions were just posed. Start there. We have looked at the building inspector's determination from 2011. Um, we've reviewed the application materials that have come in. We've consulted with staff prior to even seeing the application materials. Also had conversations with the applicant's attorney, and based on the, the case law, the New York State case law for vested rights, versus vested rights is really what we're talking about here. Um, the case law talks about substantial completion. Once you, you meet this, you, you mentioned subjective as, as a description of substantial completion. Once you meet this, this threshold of substantial completion, whatever that may be, um, you then have vested rights in the approval. So here, we have a site plan application that was granted back in 2002. The applicant, um, granted, didn't construct the actual building, but, uh, but invested substantial monies towards, uh, in, in furtherance of that approval. Built the driveway, built the bridge, extended the water main. So at, in 2011, the building inspector, in consultation with town council at the time, determined that that was enough to, to, for this applicant to have, uh, vested rights in those approvals, at least as far as the, um, the house site and the, the 100-foot wetland buffer. So based on our knowledge of the New York State case law, I think that the 2011 building inspector determination, uh, it appears to be correct.
So, so if I can ask, what, what's the definition of substantial completion? Is there a dollar number, percentage of?
It, it varies depending upon the project. A lot of cases have, have held that, like, foundations in the ground, that's been, uh, sort of a, a threshold point at which some courts have said, that's where you have substantial completion. But, um, you know, others have said, uh, certain expenditures in furtherance of a-
Right, and what was the justification of our counsel, were that determination?
So, in 2011, the building inspector consulted with the, the town council at the time.
Is there, is there, is there a record of, of what the rationale, substantial completion, what measure did he use to make that determination?
Sure, at that time, the driveway had been constructed, the bridge and the water main extension.
So it was site improvement?
Correct.
No building, just site? So maybe the site was substantially complete, but no building works.
No, uh-
No housework.
Right, but the bridge and, like, in, infrastructure.
The access and infrastructure were improved to a point where the legal counsel per the building inspector determined that there was a vested right.
But there's no, there's no, I was trying to get to your thing. There's no dollar value, I mean, in my world-
Remember Lake Baikie?
Yeah, Baikie.
In my world, substantially complete is 90 percent, it's done.
It's not substantial completion, it's substantial construction.
Oh, substantial construction.
I thought you said completion.
We heard complete.
If I said completion, I'm sorry, I, I misspoke.
Oh, okay, so substantial construction.
Construction, yes, and then-
That's okay.
Which, to me, is the same thing, but I'm an engineer.
So that, okay, that's a little bit different, substantial construction, okay.
Construction, those improvements, those million dollars.
I know when I was inspecting it back then, the cost was about $250,000, just for that bridge.
So the-
That's a hundred-foot span.
So the rationale, that's, I remember the approvals for that, that was a big deal.
It's a chunk of change.
Yes, it is.
That and the water main.
The water main, those are the two biggest costs.
I'm, I'm curious, though, because in the building inspector's memo, he says that the bridge costs $770,000.
I think that was all the improvements.
Huh? It's the water main. No, the water main was separate.
Oh, well.
I'm sure the gravel road might be included, but that couldn't take it from 250 to 770.
Right, so I, I guess the argument is that, that the current, that, that landowner made the investment to approve, to improve the property on the basis of an approval from his town.
Exactly.
And for us to rescind that approval is, would be not fair, essentially.
Correct, that they basically acquired a, a property interest in the, in the approvals.
Got it, got it.
So, but the applicant is here tonight seeking, um, stormwater approvals, tree permit, and as, as Mr. Rabel said tonight, all based on the modern, you know, today's standards. So it's really-
And stormwater and-
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Are we, is the proposed activity at this point completely outside of the wetlands and wetland buffers as defined back then of the 100-foot?
We are still with, at the, at the O2 approval, there was some impact on the 100-foot wetland buffer. There still is, but it has been somewhat reduced.
So, so if I may, at this point, maybe the applicant should present their plans. Um, you know, staff have reviewed this, and, you know, there's some missing information to kind of complete the picture, but I think it's worth hearing from the applicant for you to see it.
Oh, I agree, I just wanted to get the threshold issues, because I, I think it's important for us to know even what Kleins have questions we should be asking or can't be asking.
Yeah, I, I think they'll, if they don't point it out, staff will point it out for you.
Yeah, I know that's true.
And before you dive into the actual house plans, do you have a site plan that shows the neighbors? Do you have an aerial or something that shows approximately your neighbors?
So we do have a site plan presentation to come after the house presentation. I don't know if it is that macro, that it would show the neighboring homes, but we know that's a question that's been raised, and we started looking into it based on some of the communications that have come in and were forwarded to us by staff.
Right, we, we normally require it.
Okay.
It's really not discretion, we require it.
Is Dark Hollow Lake Whipplewell Lake?
I believe so.
Okay, because I couldn't find Dark Hollow Lake anywhere. So it's Whipplewell Lake, okay.
Well, two lakes, Whipplewell Lake and Dark Hollow is two.
You can't see it at night, because it's dark. When do you go, daylight?
I was just trying to find out where that lake was, but we got a letter from a neighbor about the lake.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
I have a, I have another, um, question. I noticed that the, the, the road, the access road seems to go off property.
Correct.
Okay, so you, naturally, I'm sure you have easements for that, I'm not worried about that particularly. But then is another 100-foot buffer down at the bottom? And does that road, does that, I don't have, I need to see the extension of that in the future submittal. Uh, because I, if, if there's another bridge, even if it's a culvert bridge, to go over an active part of that wetland, then we have another issue about two crossings, um, on a project. And I don't know quite how those work, so.
Well, and, and I think that part, that gets to some of the missing information regarding this application. In 2002, which instigated the building permit that started construction, there were a host of conditions that the planning board had put into the building permit application and which were put into the building permit and required as of CFO. CFO was not issued because the house wasn't constructed, and, you know, there was limited site improvements made that were vested, um, it proved to be a vested interest in the property. This application needs to be expanded to include the entirety of the application from King Street to the house. What we had, what was submitted to us was very cursory when it came to what had already been constructed, and then really focused on the building envelope, which you're gonna be, hear a lot about in the applicant's presentation. But the next rendition of this application before you needs to address the entirety and then look to what was conditioned before and improve the plans now for this application, because that construction was never completed.
Yeah, but keep in mind, there was a driveway that was part of the plan that was like almost 1,000 feet long. Now, they did some improvements when I inspected it, 2004, you're talking about 14 years ago. And I think the application could be very clear and concise on exactly what they're gonna do to improve it, because I would imagine that is in pretty much disrepair right now, nothing's been done with new gravel, new, new restoration, and all that's gotta be included, and with the new area of disturbance as well. And I don't know whether you included those areas for the impermeaseness, for the coverage calculations also, which they should be.
Yeah, in addition, there was mitigation required back in 2002's approval for the first driveway crossing. You know, and that was never signed off or completed to our knowledge, so.
Stephen and I never signed off on any of that construction, we received no certifications.
Right.
No亻建s, nothing.
Yeah, so I think there needs to be, you know, amended wetland permit has to be part of, you know, their overall submission.
Well, that, in order for that to happen, shouldn't there be a, an amended wetland application?
I think so.
Right, and, and I think, you know, we had just advised the applicant through staff review memos that that work needed to be done, and that the, the, the wetland issues that were not completed needed to be completed as part of this application. So all of that has to be facilitated.
Right, but I think the thrust of my, my comments are that there are some vested rights here, I understand that. But at the same token, there are some changes within those permits, and whether there is a vested right or not, it's my understanding that this board still has the obligation to review any changes in those environmental permits as they go forward. Now, we may have to use these, the standards of 100-foot, and we will, but, uh, other than that, those things that we're going to be looking at with a road that may exist or may not exist, or would condition to exist, to the extent to Dick's point, that that's going to impact buffers, we need to look at that, and that needs to be part of the application.
Okay, so one of the issues we flagged in our cover letter, and this was a question that we had sort of raised, was, knowing that if the 100 wetland buffer setbacks were applied, which it sounds as though we are in agreement, that there is a net reduction in buffer impacts, is a new amended wetland permit required? It sounds from the board and from staff that there's consensus that it is.
Yes.
So we will be sure in our next submission to expand the plans all the way down to King Street and to address those issues and questions.
Good.
Is there anything else?
Well, that would apply also to any of the other environmental permits. So steep slope, if there's any sort of changes that we're going to see there, tree, and of course, stormwater.
We've already submitted them, they've submitted those.
Yep.
Yes, those, those are submitted.
Yep.
Okay, I guess the only other comment is, how much has the building footprint increased? 20 percent, wasn't it?
I don't have the figure on hand, I don't, would that be part of it? That's a roughly 4,000 square feet increase.
Over?
Over roughly 4,000 square feet.
It's a 4,000-foot square foot increase?
It's approximate doubling of-
Doubling, okay.
So I think it might be helpful to go through the plans and the designs, just to give everyone a concept of, of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Because I'd, I'd say right, right now that, that while we, um, all agree, I think, on the board, and with you, that the 100-foot setback is appropriate. Increasing something beyond the footprint, which was clearly stated as the bounds in the building inspector's, uh, letter, is something that we're gonna have to have a discussion on, because there's gonna be runoff from paved areas, there's gonna be runoff from the roof. There's gonna be, well, there's not a lot of room for grass, but, you know, there's gonna be, um, some grass with fertilizers and pesticides and other things that people are gonna wanna apply. And given that if you use the 150-foot wetland buffer, there wouldn't be a house. So that, we need to protect, in my mind, we have to protect the 100-foot buffer even more than we would otherwise, because you're asked, if we grant an increase, because there's all sorts of other things, you know, that, that could come, you know, come to bear that would impact the wetland. Right, so-
Yeah.
And so I gave you some things that balance. If you have no grass, you probably don't use, you know, pesticides and fertilizers. But if you have more roof area, then, then you have stuff, and if you have a flat roof besides, which it seems like some of this might be-
Got a grass roof.
Then you-
You have a grass roof, that's right.
You have the grass roof up there, well, that's a positive potentially, and so that has to be put into the balance also.
Absolutely, and I think we're in agreement, and part of the benefit of this design, which we'll get into detail, is that we are going to modern storm, modern stormwater protections, which are more stringent than what was, what was in place in 2002. And so it's more stringent requirements, generally speaking, that we now have to meet. So with that, I will turn it over to Lori Babu.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lori Babu, I'm here on behalf of Blaze McCooy Architecture, and Gary and Samara Klein, who've been long-term clients of ours. We were really excited when this project came into our office, because it's not often, as a Hampton space architecture firm, that we have the opportunity to work with this deeply sloped site. So it was an exciting challenge for us. And from the beginning- And from the beginning, we knew that we wanted to approach the project with a really light hand and to minimize the amount of disruption that the project introduced to the site. Our design approach was really inspired by the natural beauty of the site and via desire to knit the house into the existing topography. So the program is split between the two volumes, or two stacks of volumes, rather. And within each of those stacks, the volumes shift to create green roofs, to create terraces and covered outdoor living space. As you can see, as you can see in this roof plan here, green roofs figure prominently into the design. They constitute about 40% of the building coverage. And they play an important role in mitigating runoff and minimizing the impact of stormwater The proposed design works with the existing steep slopes by running in tandem with the contours and nestling them into the hill, which I think you can see in this rendering here. The form was really designed to integrate into the woods with minimal impact on the surroundings, both from an environmental perspective and from a visual perspective. So the, the design itself should not be visible at all from King Street. And the materials that we've selected are intended to blend in with the natural surroundings. In terms of, here's a view from the approach. And another view from the entry to the house. In terms of building elements, the house will be designed to be extremely energy efficient. And we plan to incorporate an array of solar panels on the roof as well. So there's been a lot of attention paid to making this an environmentally conscious project.
What's the height of the building at its...
I want to say it's 34 feet.
Okay.
To the...
To existing actual grade.
Yeah, upper blades of grass. But the, do we have, you've indicated that it's, we will not see it from King Street. When we look later on and we want to see those plans where we see some neighbors, can we see some elevations, you know, proposed elevations from those neighbors as well as perhaps from the lake?
Certainly, we can put together some renderings.
Thank you.
Happy to do that. Lastly, our office constructed, it's physical model, and I just wanted to show you a few photos of that model. This gives you a little sense of the context from which that model was taken. So the red line is the property boundary. And the rectangular portion that's highlighted there is what we modeled. So moving forward, here you can see, that's the model itself. The model is a little too big for transport. It's four and a half feet by six feet. So it gives you a little bit of a sense of the scale of the house relative to the overall site. Here's a view looking north, up towards the top end of Whipplewell Lake. Another view looking northwest. So this would be more or less from where one of those neighbors across the lake may be. And you can see there's a significant amount of tree cover that's camouflaging the house. Another view looking west. Looking northeast.
These, I think, will really satisfy us to the extent that you might also make the trees look a little bit more alive.
It's litter.
This is after the construction you normally, you know, produce?
This is after the tornado comes through. The house is still standing.
But I think these would be very helpful, actually.
Yeah.
You know, this, this sort of rendering.
Great.
So if you want to work from these and not reinvent the wheel, it'd be good.
Okay, yeah, we'd be happy to do that. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dan Thorpe from LaGuardia Design.
Good evening. Daniel Thorpe, partner with LaGuardia Design Landscape Architects. My firm, also based out on the east end of Long Island, was retained to help Lori and her team bespokely fit this house into what is, as we can all agree, a very environmentally sensitive area. So as part of our design process, we always look at the greater context. In this case, there is a large concentration set on existing vegetation in the existing watersheds, which is something we immediately visited the site to study. The existing woodland is a rich environment with existing, with a large palette of existing native trees such as American beech, sassafras, swamp maple, white oak, with an understory of mountain laurel, lowbush blueberry, native ferns, Pennsylvania sedge, all native to the northeast and specifically this area. So the goal of the project from, from our angle is to, obviously, the house is going to disturb the site, but our goal as landscape architects is to responsibly take care of the site during that, during that construction and plan for it well in advance. In yellow is the buildable envelope, or sorry, in yellow is the property. In red is the buildable envelope. So you can see a large portion of the site is forested and the buildable envelope is taking, does cut into a bit of that woodland area. This is a topographic study that we did originally to look at the, we knew just by looking at the physical model that Lori's team built, that there was an immense watershed heading towards the house location. So we wanted to study that in greater detail. So through this topographic analysis, now in red, we have slopes greater than 20%. The lighter pink areas are 15 to 20%. And then the darker area in the background is the aerial coming through. Those are, those are more moderate slopes, more like the valleys between the ridges. So in studying the watershed, we found these existing natural swales that came down through the site. These are the more prominent swales heading downward towards Whipplewell Lake. In white is the proposed building footprint. So obviously, we're set in between these major watersheds. And the site design obvi, is...
Could you go back?
Yep.
I'm just curious about something.
Sure.
You, you have these two, you know, go this way. You have these two swales identified.
Sure.
Which is good. That's very helpful to see where the building is. And what is, is this a swell also that's going, you know, are these two, huh, why doesn't that one?
Doesn't show them.
I know, I think what you're after is that...
Yeah, it's strange.
I'm going to use red.
Where the bridge?
Maybe red might be.
Here, there's red.
And the bridge is located over a very active swell. That's definitely the most prominent form on the site.
Sure.
It's not working either.
I figured I would give it a try.
Oh, I got it. Is it red?
Well...
No.
Are you asking where the bridge is? Alan told you where the bridge is?
Speaking of the microphone.
I think Robert's laser worked better earlier.
Maybe it's too much red.
Yeah, right.
That's where the bridge is.
I know.
Right. When you, while you're there, when you follow the point of the property that heads towards King Street?
At the very bottom. Go up a little bit more.
The point of the property. Point, right, that point to your right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that whole area there, is that a wetland?
No, there's, there's a couple little slope wetlands that run through there.
Uh huh, okay.
The driveway's already been constructed across.
Alan, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, well, I'm asking him questions while he's, you know...
That's all right. Alan can steal the show.
Just a fascinated pointer.
He can walk around with the microphone.
That's more clever.
No, I, no, the driveway is already constructed through there and there's some culverts that have already been built to convey the runoff, obviously, from the north to the south.
So those would be culvert bridges?
Not really bridges, they're culvert, they're pipes. If you want to call them culvert bridges, that's fine.
Well, if you have a round circle and you have something over it to drive over it, it's a culvert bridge.
Fine.
It's a very short one, but it is nonetheless...
Now, bridges defined as anything more than 20-foot clear span.
20-foot, a bridge is 20-foot?
Clear span.
Well, but we're talking...
That's the definition of a bridge.
Good.
You're talking culvert crossing.
I'm talking culvert.
They talk dirty, right?
I'm talking about crossings in wetlands and how many are allowed. And for any one property, as I recollect, it's one, but this is more than one property. You know, I'm, I'm an architect and I love it when engineers disagree. It's so refreshing. Each other disagreeing with me, but to disagree with each other is gratifying.
Yes. When we passed the Environmental Overlay District, that had a prohibition of one crossing for principal access.
Right, and does the overlay reply here?
Well, that's the question of its grandfather.
That was the threshold question we talked about.
It's still 100-foot, it would not apply.
Yes, but...
Yeah, so it's not just the 100-foot that goes with, you know, that, it's the other rules that come, this is fascinating.
But there's also, there's also existing infrastructure put on this site right now. So it's a matter of making sure that that infrastructure is improved to the extent that the board is desiring for this application and consistent with your previous decisions. Or maybe not, depending on how you feel, and making sure that, you know, we have plans that represent that information.
Over, this is what always happens when Alan gets involved.
Yeah.
Just goes off the tracks.
He has too many clever ideas before it makes our heads blow up.
It's a nice interlude. So the site design. The site program contains driveway, parking area towards the front of the house, terraces around the lakeside of the house, as well as gardens, planters, walkways, all of which we realize are going to impact this major, these two major swales that run through the project site. So rather than fight against Mother Nature, which is obviously a...
A losing proposition.
A losing proposition. Our concept is to embrace the idea of water flowing through the house. So in blue would be stormwater, what we're calling stormwater flow channels around, along all of our hardened edges and infrastructure, so that the water doesn't erode away the landscape along the edge of the building. You can see that it wraps around the major watersheds to the east of the house. And then also just beyond the bridge, where our driveway is coming through, that's going to create, that's also going to create a flow channel where we need to address the intersection with that existing swell. So at the head of the bridge, within our buildable envelope, we're trying to create stone sump that we can then, we can then introduce stormwater treatment within. So all of those blue areas can be looked at as stormwater treatment areas. This is an image of the idea for along these crushed stone flow channels along the house, which are intended to slow down water, capture it, and deposit it within stormwater treatment basins to keep, this is a project about preserving the water quality of the area at the end of the day. So how do we capture all of this stormwater, slow it down, and treat it in order to continue nourishing the existing lake? Here's another photo of a flow channel. This would probably be similar to what the gravel sumps, like at the head of the bridge, might look like. Yes.
I appreciate all the water qualities talk.
Yeah.
But I'll keep in mind, everything's got to be in accordance with DEC standards.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I appreciate your creativity here, but it's got to be in conformance with that or else it won't get any credit for those.
Sure, and that's why we have Alan.
Okay. Water quality is great, I'm more concerned about flooded as a term in your stuff.
Sure, yeah.
And this only, this only deals with the water quality, which is just a one-year storm, so.
Right.
And you've seen the memo from the New York City DEP?
Yes.
Because obviously, this is a very critical watershed.
This is... Sure.
Goes into the Kenske, which is a terminal reservoir before it goes into the city for drinking.
Sure.
They have high standards.
So...
There's another reason why Alan's here, I guess.
So here are some more images of the proposed landscape. This is going to be a fertilizer-free, self-sustaining, ecologically consistent landscape. We're not trying to create mow lawn areas and flood level surfaces with high runoff rates. The upper left image would be the area above the sanitary system that might be revegetated using native grasses and native trees consistent with the existing forest. All of the, that, that upper middle photo would be the area between the two volumes of the house. That would be a rain garden to capture rainwater and, and again, treating it before it reenters the aquifer. The upper, yep?
Would the applicant be agreeable to a condition that would be set forth in permanent form and run with the land, et cetera, stating that there would not be ever any pesticides or fertilizers on this property?
We could present the idea.
Okay. I mean, you're making that pitch now and again, because of the sensitivity, I think it's something that would be very attractive and could help us with the wetland application as well.
Yeah, yeah, sure. That's the goal with every native landscape, that it eventually becomes non-irrigated.
But we have different applicants who, different property owners later on, who don't necessarily share those...
Okay, understood.
Those concepts.
Ideas. The upper left is another way we plan to kind of celebrate the presence of water on site, maybe in place of downspouts on the house. We might have some rain chains to visibly present water and stormwater as it comes down off of the green roofs. Here is a view from above showing the two watersheds as they come around the house. That existing swell that comes around the bottom side of the house, the driveway again is creating a major flow channel. So that's something where we intend to put a linear drain along the base of a retaining wall that would channel the water to a stormwater treatment area.
What kind of treatment do you propose for the parking area and the driveways?
Well, pervious surfaces. I know the DEP has some high standards in terms of what qualifies as a pervious surface for a driveway. So we'll be working with them and with Alan to come up with some solutions for how to... There's a lot of grade change in approaching the house. So creating a drivable surface when you're working on some slopes that are nine to one without using a bound material, it will be a challenge, but we'll, we'll work through that. We plan on working through that. We recognize that as a problem. The blue areas represent areas where the landscape will be used to capture rainwater. The purple areas represent green roofs and planters around the house, again, capturing, retaining runoff. And then lastly, this is an image looking from the lake up at the house. And focused more on what we're seeing as the more dominant swell that comes towards the project. And just again, identifying that that whole edge of the house that interacts with that flow of, from the watershed will be treated using that crushed stone flow system that's really going to prevent erosion and keep the buildings from having what we hope is a negative impact on those existing slopes that lead down to the shoreline of the lake.
I like the color scheme also, that it's earth tones and so that...
Architectural tones.
Yeah.
Oh, of the, of the house, yeah.
So that helps too with visibility.
Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, thank you.
So that is our presentation. If the board has any additional questions, we're happy to answer them as best we can. We understand that we need to get you additional information.
Right. I think we have some comments from everyone, Sabrina, Bob, and Steve. So Sabrina, why don't you run through yours first?
Sure, I, I...
Have you received everything?
I believe so. I know I have Sabrina's memo, Bob's memo, Steve's...
I know I have Sabrina's memo, Bob's memo, Steve's memo, and some neighborhood correspondence as well.
We've received neighborhood correspondence, and of course, this is not a public hearing at this point, but of course, all that correspondence will be part of the record, and when we do have a public hearing, we'll of course welcome public comment, questions.
So, you know, I would like to say that, that in this particular application, working with this applicant, the architects, the engineer, that the pre-application meeting, even the discussion tonight, they have shown a real respect for the area and the lands. I think it's gonna come down to whether or not this house is too big for this lot, whether or not they can achieve what they are trying to achieve from an architectural and a site planning aspect on the property. The one thing that I think we need better information on is how all of this is going to work. You know, what stormwater practices are they going to, to use? What is the development coverage? How are you gonna actually construct the house on the site? In the previous approvals, there was discussion of rock crushing, you know, what is needed to actually construct this structure in this location on this property? And I, we, the devil is in the details, and to date, your submission doesn't have the level of detail that staff need to really ascertain how this is going to work. You know, your modeling, your graphics, they're phenomenal. What you propose in the sense of care of the land is wonderful. I wish every applicant could show their buildings with the flow channels going around them. It really speaks volumes to how this is working. You know, in looking at your presentation, my concern is the erosion. You talk about the gravel, the rock, trying to slow it down, prevent erosion. You need to submit the details to us on that and how that will work. And, you know, we're going out of the box here, green roofs, forty percent is green roofs. Well, how is that green roof working, and how can I look at that in the sense of development coverage and possibly reduce your overage and development coverage because you are covering the roof with a system that is going to prevent any runoff from that building, from those areas of the building? I don't have enough information. Are you gonna eventually drain that runoff down into a gutter, into your stormwater retention ponds that are serving as your water features? I don't know. If I can try and, you know, I need more information to determine whether or not you're over on your development coverage and how those systems are working. And so my memo really relates to the need for more information, so I can make determinations in relation to numbers that the planning board needs to consider and determine whether or not this house is too big for this site, too big for the building envelope that it's been allowed. I think a critical component, which you guys have not addressed, is the connection between the house and King Street. You know, the, the bridge was built, and you addressed from the bridge to the house, but we need to address from King Street to the house. In the 2002 approvals, there was a lot of discussion regarding your northerly neighbor and, and plantings in relation to that normally na, northerly neighbor because of the view to the driveway. It's been many years since that plan was approved. What does it look like today, and do you still need that type of screening? Do we need different screening? Steve needs that information in order to make those type of, you know, that type of determination. So what we really need is more detail on your plan. It, you know, it's promising, it looks great, you know, the application itself has a lot of information in it, but it's not detailed enough for us to really move you forward.
And that's, in part, as you said just ahead, that, that you have so many unique things, some of which we've never addressed.
Correct.
And therefore, I, I, no, I'll be asking for, you know, how are the long-range maintenance plans gonna work? Because if we, whenever we put in shrubs or trees, we say, well, five to ten years, usually ten years to make sure it all works, and the same is gonna have to be, I would say off the top of my head, a minimum of ten years for the green roofs.
But, but I would also say, you showed a lovely picture of the, above the septic system, okay? What are the maintenance requirements for that? Is that mowing once a year? I mean, 'cause, right, I mean, and how are you going to assure any future property owners that that is going to be known and understood and part of the program for this home? And, and, and I will tell you, you know, I have personal experience of living in a hillside home, if you will, that was built with the land, and over time, you know, the five-hundred year storms and the water coming down, these stormwater systems are critical. The paths are critical. The care that you're presenting needs to be put into details, and it needs to be put into future programming for this home, that the board can ha, be assured that will be implemented.
We can do a maintenance manual.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, you know, and, and maybe deed-restrict some of this, I, I'm not sure. But, you know, we are definitely going into territory that I think the town is interested in, we wanna try and work with you, and, you know, we wanna kind of do what's right, you know, again, going back to the green roofs. If you're capturing that water on the rooftop and keeping it on the rooftop and it's never seeing the ground, is that really affecting development coverage?
No, no, the green roof's only gonna treat the water quality.
Right.
They have to outlet, because if you don't outlet the water, it's gonna collapse.
Correct.
Water's sixty-two point five pounds per cubic feet, so it's gotta go into a stormwater system. It's gonna be for the water quantity, it's never gonna stay up there.
Yeah.
You could, they'd have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars structurally for the roof.
So whether it can be there for-
It's only for the water quality, again, it's only for one-year storm.
But how's it gonna work? And, and, you know?
There's, there's, there's technology, there's data.
And see, all the, the green roof they have to design is in the stormwater manual, which I review all the time, and Alan and I are gonna have big discussions on a strategy on how we're gonna do this stormwater. We're gonna sit down, him and I, we'll fund over this, because it gets very complex. This was a previous stormwater plan that was presented years ago. Things have changed, now they have the extreme rain, rain event, which is nine point two three, it used to be six point five. So Alan and I have to go over all the stormwater, believe you me, we would be looking at that.
So you can't grandfather that stuff in?
Absolutely not.
Right.
Absolutely not. So I don't want any more water coming off that site than what it is now.
Yeah.
And I'll be looking at all that to the nth degree.
And I think we have to, that's very important in this, in this particular case, and even the septic, so I mean, it has to be pumped out every two years, as you well know, and so the truck has to get within fifty feet, I guess, or sixty feet to pump it out, so that's, you know, okay, how are they gonna do that? Is that gonna be another gravel extension or some-
And do the extent and nature of the stormwater, I recommended it on another application before the board, I believe it was Citron, I would recommend highly that they have this very sophisticated stormwater management plan, that Jennifer and I will take a look at and review.
Yeah, that goes with all the management plans, if they're gonna have to have it, and so-
And I want for Steven for all the tree plantings and replacement, well, it's mitigation, and I want for stormwater as well.
When you say nine point five inches per something-
That's for a hundred-year storm, that's a twenty-four-hour event.
That's right, but that doesn't count this year.
Yeah, right.
Where we've had bigger storms.
But you can only use what the-
I know, but, that's, they, they only have to use what is in the book. But consider, you know, that we are in a different circumstance than we were fifteen, twenty years ago. We used to have droughts. We'll have others, they will come back, droughts, but in the meantime, we've, we're having, you know, some serious rain events that are above a hundred year.
Ten, fifteen years ago, when Frank was here, we had drought conditions.
Yeah.
Had a preserve of water.
So regrettably-
But topic of discussion at the planning board.
Regrettably, these meetings with you and Alan will not be open to the public.
So, so just again, some other points of information.
Excuse me, just, so I'm finished, but I wanna finish, and excuse me for interrupting you. I agree with Sabrina, what she has said, that this is, this is very innovative, it's very exciting to see. It would be nice if we could make it work, you know, without bankrupting your clients as to, you know, with all the rules, but, but very exciting, I agree with you.
But, but for the board's information, this is a Type II action under CCR. You know, I just think more operational information, you know, if you're bringing in fill, how, you know, if you're bringing it in, how many truckloads are you bringing in for that septic system? You know, what is your, how are you gonna, how are you gonna do that? How many trucks? That type of thing.
And what's the capacity of the bridge, weight-wise?
That was designed-
My next question. Eight twenty-five? All right, that should do it.
And we had the fire department testing.
So, I can just take a second here, I'd agree wholeheartedly with Sabrina and Dick on the, the character of the design and the process. We've been, we've been doing this for a long, I think there's probably, well Sheila's not here tonight, but among us, there might be forty, fifty years combined experience working in this town with developers and-
It's all Tom, the rest of us just look over and we are.
I do feel that we're, so-
Said in such a way.
Yeah, so the, there, there's this, this natural consequence that over time, in any area, all the easy sites are gone, and you end up with the tough sites and the difficult site, and this is a very difficult site. I mean, the bridge itself is testimony to that. And it's, it's interesting to been, and we have been, as a consequence, we've been seeing developers come in wanting to do thirty-lot subdivisions on very difficult land, steep slopes, valleys, watersheds, stands of trees that we don't want to take down, and it's interesting to me that all of the regulations that have been put in place in this town with respect to all of those things, would naturally, if one was an architect, landscape architect, you'd look at all those things and you would derive the solution to the problem from the regulations. And I've always felt that the, that the solution, the proper solution to anything is in a pro, is in a proper understanding of the problem itself. And over and over again, we have arguments and fights with developers and builders who wanna take the top off a bridge and just plop a standard, five thousand square foot standards, a developer home on it, and we see it over and over and over again, and over and over again, I try to make the argument, you know, maybe there's something different, just look at the steep slope you're on, there's an opportunity there. And this is one of those, those times when it seems to me that we finally have an example of what I think is the right process to go through, and it looks to me that we're on the way to, quite frankly, an elegant solution, which is, I think, what every problem calls for. If you guys, well, you're younger than I am, but you probably are familiar with Ian McCard's work, and he, this was the essence of how he would approach problems, and you guys are on that pathway, and it's refreshing to see that we're getting there. And there are going to be people who are going to come in and say, gee, you know, it doesn't look like it fits in. And I think that in the neighborhood, in the context of the town, all those things, but I, I think so far as we've seen, I think it, it fits in very, very well. So I, personally, I encourage you to just keep going, and we'll work together to solve all these problems, which are real, these are real problems, right? But again, in the evolution of solving the problem, you'll end up with a better product. So we're looking forward to that process.
One, one other thing I forgot is that this, we have a, it's not really a regulation, but it's certainly something we strive to do, is from a site point of view, we don't like, you know, any houses, as has been mentioned, that's built exactly on the top of the hill. And to that end, it appears that the ground level for your, your building is gonna be somewhere around, oh, I don't know, eighteen to twenty feet below the top of the knoll, which also is good. We may be a little pushy on that when we get farther down the road, but that's a very good start.
Yeah, Frank would write, say you don't build on the, don't build on the ridge line, go below it. That's one of our purposes, too.
Bob, you had some comments?
We had some comments too as well. Welcome down to the stormwater comments, obviously, as I discussed before, I'm very concerned with the amount of runoff as far as stormwater quantity. I'm sure they're gonna do an excellent job with quality, which is always the easier part, but I'm concerned about the quantity coming onto that site, going to adjacent property owners, and into the lake itself, to make certain that nothing's gonna be increased in any way, shape, or form. And I know, like I said before, there was an original report done, I don't know how much confidence I have in that old report that was done fourteen years ago, so many things have changed. That's why Alan and I have to sit down and come up with a strategy that we both agree on. That's ST one. ST two, if they were gonna be doing any type of new wind filtration or any type of system, rain orders, whatever, they're gonna have to do new deep test holes, and deep foot test, based on the DEC manual. Or they can use the old chapter three regulations for drywall design as well, which I believe is more suited nowadays for the infiltration rate. ST three, I have a whole bunch of brief history on the top, which everyone went over previously on the historical background, but I would highly recommend that they show exactly what they're gonna do to the twelve-foot wide gravel driveway, because I doubt very much that much of that gravel is there anymore, since it's been in disrepair and non-maintained for the past fourteen years. So that's gotta be shown on the plan as a perviousness.
Right, I think that's a very good recommendation, so, I mean, we'll, we'll direct the applicant to make sure that they follow through on that.
That's critical. That's gonna help Sabrina with her coverage calculations too as well. Obviously, it's in the DEP, East Hudson Watershed, you're gonna have to get some sort of amendment from them and have them look at it, at the very least. I'm gonna need some sort of no objection letter from them, once we get the plans more developed. Then I go to general comments, basically the same verbiage in there with the history, but then I just get to the chase, on the bottom says it's recommended that conditions fifteen through twenty be incorporated, just like Sabrina and Stephen said, they were never really closed out on the CO. You might wanna take a look at them, there might be, I would recommend that be added to the resolution, plus any others that we come up with as well.
Makes good sense. Makes good sense, yeah.
Yeah, and also too, for some reason, I think there's a lot of semantics going on with the envelope line, I think they should show the original clearing and grading in the line. It's clear, it's shown very clearly on the original subdivision map, and I couldn't tell whether they mimicked that or not, so I would highly recommend getting that subdivision map you have on file in the planning department, and make sure, and it follows that to the T. G three, show the limits of disturbance, which include any work recorded in the proposed block of gravel, and the square footage. Obviously, the New York State permit that they got years ago is expired, they'll have to get a new one, if they're gonna do any work in the right of way. Also too, they have to get an amended DEC permit that expired in two thousand thirteen, and obviously, the WIS just a county permit expired too as well, and they have to get a new permit on that as well. And that's it.
Bob, I think you alluded to, and I know Sabrina mentioned also, we should get information on the cut and fill, what we're gonna see here.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And again, I know Sabrina mentioned the truckloads, that kind of stuff, the construction sequence, et cetera, okay?
A quick question, the septic system that you, that you play that tentatively is based on the original? Okay, now this home is twice as big?
Same number of bedrooms.
And how many bedrooms?
Four.
Four.
Steve, you had some comments?
Firstly, I wanna applaud, you know, the design group, because I, you know, this is the type of planning that we always wish for, you know, to see the sensitivity to looking at site conditions and working with them instead of just the typical removal and putting back.
So we had to go to Hampton to get this, huh?
They had to come here to do it.
But a lot of my comments are, you know, looking at just the tree ordinance and, you know, compliance with the standards within the code, but also looking at, there's, we need more details just on, you know, removing some of the trees. I mean, around the perimeter, it wasn't clear, because there wasn't enough information on grading or other features to know why they had to be removed. And there is a large oak, you know, right in the front of the septic, which, don't know the condition of, but whether that can be saved or can be fit into, you know, these things.
That was the big twenty-four inch one, right?
Twenty-eight inch.
We never doubted that you did that, but remember, somebody eventually hires a contractor.
Yeah, so, so it's really just consistency with the code, and, you know, one of the things you, I mean, you can just say they're all in good condition and you'd have to be subject to replacement, but, you know, working with the code, you'll be able to reduce the number of tree replacements that you have to do, and then incorporate that into your overall landscape design.
Okay.
And with the wetlands, we have, I think we've already covered that, that, you know, it probably makes sense, it has to be an amended one, and as part of the overall application, you know, just to deal with the driveway, you know, situation and, and some of the stormwater.
Steve, can we expect to, to receive memos from ERB and the conservation board on this?
I think it's warranted in this case, you know, to do, you know, so when it makes sense or-
We might all want, might wanna do a site visit here too.
Yes, I would think we would have to in this bit of site.
Maybe we should coordinate with ERB and CP on that too?
One of, one of the things that, if you recall, quite a few years ago, when we were doing the open space plan, you know, we also proposed ridge line and view shed protection, you know, and I think this project has a good illustration of, you know, trying to attempt to do that. And one of the analysis should be to really look at the elevations from, and the viewpoints from all four directions.
One of the, the tools that we like to use are some cross-sections through the high point of the house, and then, you know, a distance away so that one can see what the view lines are, would be very helpful to us.
Especially to a neighbor.
And you can use the existing trees.
Oh, I'm sorry, with regard to trees, to sort of put a pin in your points, when trees have to be taken down, and they will, and we, as you know, have this ordinance about tree replacement, and there is- and there is supervision where you can, what you can't replace, you put either money into a tree. We have a tree fund or whatever we call it, which allows, which I guess allows the town then to put trees elsewhere up.
That's great.
We all, but I think that we prefer, when you can.
Keep the trees.
We keep the trees, but those that you can't keep, put the trees that you need to replace, replace them on the property. Because taking them and putting them in a fund is like putting them in a tree museum. We would rather have, maintain the habitat that's there now. And if you can find a way to accommodate the replacement trees on property, I think that was, that's something that we'd look very favorable on.
Yeah, and there's more than enough opportunity to do that.
Right. Good to hear. Good to hear.
And again, that might help us with some of the issues that Dick and Tom have raised in terms of visuals from off-site. May give you some opportunities.
And drainage, too, if you can find.
Good. So how do we want to coordinate a site visit, assuming that you want us to come? Nice answer. So, you know, it does have to be right away. I don't know how long it'll be before you come back to us with your information, but.
We'd like it before the deep snow comes.
I think it would be good, when the leaf down would be good, so that we can see.
That'd be soon.
Yeah. Be real soon.
I think there are just about a week left.
So just based on the chair's question, can we schedule the site visit while we are in the process of putting that information together?
Absolutely. The sooner the better for everybody, I think.
We'll want the property staked within reason so we can see where the buildings are really going to be.
So you need a little bit of time to prepare for that.
Staked in red tape or however you want to do it.
Okay. So we'll discuss on our end, and we can reach out to Janice to coordinate times.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
And we usually do it on the weekends?
Okay. Okay. So.
Around my soccer schedule.
Around Greg's soccer schedule.
He'll send you, you know, with the rules, he'll send you the whole thing.
And when should we schedule this next? When do you think you'll have materials back? Probably, we're looking at something, it sounds awful to say this, but next year.
Is this the middle? It's November twenty-third or fourth?
Meeting that you could possibly get on is December eighteenth. That's November twenty-sixth, and you have Thanksgiving in there.
Yeah. I'm being told, especially with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, the November twenty-sixth filing deadline.
Too tight.
I think, we think that's too tight. But we'll still work to set up the sidewalk and the.
Yeah, yeah, we can all get that covered. What's the first meeting? In two thousand nineteen?
December second is the deadline for the January fifteenth meeting.
My staff is whimpering.
Look, it's tough up here. This is not Long Island, you know, unless it wimps. This is, it's up here in the house, the hills and the mountains.
I'm guessing they're all young. I went through that. I whimper a lot.
You still whimper?
Yeah. We can, we can get going on it. If we need to adjourn, we can reach out and just say.
We want a quality app. We want to give you guys a quality app.
Right. We'd like to give you a complete package as best we can.
Up to you. We don't want to rush you. We're just telling you.
Yeah, but, but the site visit can be, you know, soon. Before, before the snow and after the leaves. It's probably three days.
Okay. Good. We'll see you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Very charming. Thank you.
Okay, we move now to another matter. This is a referral from the zoning board of appeals. This is a referral regarding Whiffle Wall Club, LLC. This is an application for a special use permit, amendment approval, one hundred fifty Whiffle Wall Road. As I am a member of Whiffle Wall, I think it's appropriate that I refuse myself, and Dick has agreed to lead the charge here. So I'll turn this over to Dick, and I'll leave for a while, read up on things I haven't read yet.
Yes. Actually, I need a glass of water or something, so I'm going to just call a brief, two-minute, you know, hiatus here before we start. If anybody else has to do anything.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, director. My name is James Ryan. I'm the principal with JMC. We are the engineers and site planners for Whiffle Wall Club, Inc. Tonight with me are Richard Cordell, my associate. We're going to go a little old school and just put up some boards tonight. That was really quite a presentation just before us, so I can't match that, but we have a very light footprint on this one as well.
We're relying on content now. Could you, is it possible for the camera to pull this forward, or will the camera not be able to pick it up?
I'm sure the camera will pick it up.
They can pick it up, please.
Can you pull that a lot closer so that we can see it better?
Also, while he's doing that.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Tonight, also Jeff Martocci is here. He's a club, the club manager, and he can answer any questions if you have questions regarding the operations. We're here on a referral basis from the zoning board of appeals, which has the purview of the special permit on this. So we are asking for a special permit. As this planning board might know, we've been before this board many times as the club makes modifications and changes to their programs here. This is a kind of a continuation of that. The last time we were before, the planning board on a referral from the zoning board was in early two thousand seventeen. We've made some changes on renovations of the clubhouse. We came before them with some changes to paddle tennis courts as well. This actually involves a change from the previous approval to a certain degree. The board might recall that application in two thousand seventeen also was going to modify what we call a pavilion building, which Richard will point out, the interior of the site to accommodate the pro shop for the tennis. We, we thought that for a number of reasons, both economic and, I think, from a functional standpoint, to relocate and modify our thinking in terms of the tennis pro shop. But in doing so, we're looking at essentially a renovation of the poolhouse building. Poolhouse building is a centrally located building there, and we'll give you a close-up in a second. Again, the pavilion building is the building we were going to do some earlier modifications on, and that's no longer part of the program at this point. What we're doing is actually resulting very few physical changes to the site. Richard will turn it over to the site plan. So as we, as we zoom into the site plan, really what we're going to be doing is occupying the existing poolhouse building. Now, if you were to look at that building from the backside of the building, Richard, you can put that up. Looking over the pool, we just took some photographs just to kind of get you some perspective on what, what we're dealing with. The back of the poolhouse building in the far left, you're looking over the pool. What we're looking at is making some changes to the second floor. So if you look at the picture on the far right-hand, upper right-hand side, that is the front of the building. And when you look at that building, and I passed by as a member of the club many times, I'd always assumed that that was a, was a used building. But when you go inside, although it's a fully sprinkled building, it's essentially a storage facility for, for the club. So in terms of functional use of that, too, we've decided as a club that we're better served by modifying that interior space of that, and we're making just a couple of changes. And Rich, if you go to the site plan. The changes that we're making that actually physically touch the ground, you know, I'll talk about the interior changes in a minute. But the changes are, in the very front of the building, we want an accessible access there. There are steps leading into this building now, so we're creating a ramp in the front of the building for handicap accessibility. We are making some minor changes to the sidewalk system to essentially extend it. I'm going to show, Richard, where we're extending the sidewalk up in this area here. And then along the roadway, there's an extension there. Just, it makes sense because we ended the sidewalk before it got to that area. So we have a handicap accessible ramp, sidewalk changes. And the only other physical change to the site is a new set of steps. Now, in that area that is connected to, that is essentially a viewing area. Right now, I'll show you, the plan has a pitched roof to that building. Which you probably can show it on. It's a pitched roof on that building, and essentially, we're, we're taking that roof line down. And we're before the architectural review board tonight, too, the meeting with us after this meeting, hopefully. So we're flattening that area, and it's becoming a viewing area for the tennis. So it's directly connected to the building, the interior of the building, where we're going to have the pro shop for the tennis, so I'll drop that down. So the pro shop for the tennis is actually going to be physically in the main building now. In that area, the box show, that's a viewing area, so it's essentially a deck with, with a clear glass rail system around that, too.
Who would have a canopy?
There's no canopy over the top of that, so it'll be, obviously, tennis, very few people are out there in the rain. There might be some, but we didn't put a top on that at all. So the, under.
Forgive me. I've been, I'm just confused.
Yeah.
Could you go back to the board that shows the four or five photographs of the building? Just want to make sure I'm reading it myself properly. So the one on the lower left is the poolhouse.
Yes. So.
This is all the poolhouse.
Yes. What might help is, as he goes through those, I'll show you where on the site plan that was taken.
That would be good.
Right. So the one on the lower left is the back of what we're calling, what we call the poolhouse building. So go to the full site plan, Richard, the other plan. So Whiffle Wall Road.
Right. I got that.
There's the pool, and that's the back of the building.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand. So all of this is within the footprint?
Yes.
Of that poolhouse?
That is, that is correct.
You talked about that being, forgive me, you talked about that being a storage area and talked about tennis shop?
Yes.
I'm getting confused about all that, because I see another building here, which is a.
I'll do my best to clear that up.
Thank you.
So, right now, that whole level, and we should go back up to the other site plan. The upper level of that is entirely storage.
Now I got it. Thank you. I missed that. Forgive me. Okay, I'm good. Keep going.
So, so we have the, included in here, they're going to have some golf simulators in there, too, that allows the golfers in the club for some winter activities in this building. They'll use it for general purposes of gathering places for the club. The pro shop will be in that area, connected to the viewing deck. And there is one tree that's coming down here. So in that location, it's a twenty-four inch oak. We did receive Mr. Coleman's comment on that, so we know we have some changes. We have to add some additional trees to this property. But when that tree is gone, you get a full view of all the tennis courts. So that, it makes a lot of sense, and that is the only tree that we're eliminating. So, so it's the stairway that we're adding that allows you a secondary access off the viewing deck. There are the changes for the handicap accessibility in the front, but there is no changes whatsoever to the footprint of the building, so we're just going to be reoccupying that, that space. And it also makes sense, it's a fully sprinkled building right now, too. The renovations, I think, are going to be much easier to do that than they would be to try to retrofit, but is now a concrete structure in the pavilion building, so it made a lot of sense to the club to do it this way. So, again, we're, we're here on referral. There is no, really, almost no visibility to this from Whiffle Wall Road either, because of some of the existing trees that are there and the grade changes that are there to the pool. And everything else is internal to the site. The secondary means of egress, the walkways, the ramps, and so on are all buried internal to the site.
A question on the deck, and this may not even be in our purview. You said the deck's not covered, because if it's raining, no one's going to stay out there and watch.
That's correct.
Tennis. But if it's a hot, sunny, sunny day, and people on the roof cooking, is there going to be awnings or umbrellas or a canopy that could come back in a later day?
There, there may be umbrellas there, too, but there's no, no plans for any permanent structure awning over the top of that.
What's happening here? What's this? These are the tennis courts?
Yeah, that's, that's an open, that's an open terrace area.
Okay, I can't see that. Okay. And that's where the tree's coming down, because.
That's right. That's correct.
In the middle of the way of the roof deck and the tennis courts. I see. So it, you can see fine over here, but you can't see these.
And just so you know, underneath that, that new roof deck, it's actually open as well. This is the underside of, of that area. So it's, there's no building, there's no usable space in there other than gathering space during inclement weather. So, again, the, what touches the ground is less than a thousand square feet total. Again, it's for purposes of accessibility and general access. And we actually think that this is a very good change, rather than the construction we were looking at in the pavilion.
And there's going to be no additional outdoor lighting added?
No additional outdoor lighting.
Okay. So I guess this is on referral?
It is on referral.
And is it, did they highlight anything in particular that they think we should be looking at, or is this just a matter of form?
As per code, they are required to refer it to you. There's nothing that is extenuating in this application for your board to weigh in.
There's one tree, and that's about it, I think.
And we did have a public hearing of the ZBA.
At least knock down three trees, so we have something more subtle than that.
We're planting some trees, but that's, that's about the extent.
By the way, I think you already have a lot of trees on the property.
We have quite a few trees on there, too, so.
Radically treed.
Yes. We believe so. But the code's the code, so.
I know I played there, so it's, it's beautiful.
And, and the improvements that they've made, thanks to the board's help on the previous special permit amendments, I think they've been extremely well received, and this is just a progression of trying to add things to keep discourse and the club viable.
I'd like to know, do we have any comments from staff, other than?
No, I would recommend, Steve, do you have any comments?
You're going to take care of the tree to your satisfaction?
And it's subject to replacement of approximately five trees.
So I would, I would recommend that the board resolve to either support or not this application and send a referral response to the zoning board.
I have no problem with that. So then, I think, would you, can we commission you to, to make said memo for the chairman, or the acting chairman's signature?
Sure.
Would you like to review that document?
I have faith in the ability of staff and you.
Well, we, we all, we all appreciate that.
Will the chairman accept email communication on this matter?
Yes, he will.
Is the memo going to be in fave, in support of, or just no issue with?
No, it'll be, I think.
In support of.
In support of, but of course, it will include the tree issue and the resolution that Mr. Coleman presents should be in the memo.
We will be in communication.
As to when?
We could probably do that this week.
Okay, so let's say early next week. Be ready. Is that any problem with the timing?
As long as it's before the next ZBA meeting.
We will send you a memo for your review by Friday. It will be up to you as to whether or not you want to make changes and get us a final sign.
That's good. Now, it's my turn? I hit it back? Very well done.
So, by the way, when you put those five trees in, put them in front of that sand trap on the thirteen.
I can absolutely agree with that. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for dropping by. Oh, did I need a resolution to?
Motion just to direct staff to prepare a positive recommendation, including Steve's comment.
Yes. Do you hear that move? Well, second? All in favor? Hi.
Well done.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dick.
Well, I like doing this once every, you know, five or ten years, so it's okay.
Okay. Okay, we have some discussion items.
Yep, we have some discussion items. We have a draft local law. This is regarding the enactment of a moratorium for the Chaposa Business Hamlet. And then we have subsequent to that, we can talk to that. Then we have a draft local law regarding section sixty dash forty-four, one hundred, ten, H, five, C, one, in regard to the accessory apartment in one family residential districts. So why don't we talk, maybe Greg can help us with the moratorium and what's going on with the downtown plans and how it's moving forward, because Greg was volunteered to be on the committee.
On the commit, what's a large committee we had, Greg?
Yeah.
My powers of appointment are very limited.
I did not realize that if we were a committee.
And I'm not too. It was representative to me as a committee.
So I'm not sure how exactly they're tied together. I mean. I mean, what's that? I will ask Sabrina to articulate it better than I can.
So, the town board most recently, as of October 30th, discussed and moved on a resolution to issue a moratorium on commercial development within the Chapukah Hamlet, consistent with the direction of the comprehensive plan and their previous discussions regarding establishing a request for proposals for an outside firm to look at rezoning for the Chapukah Business Hamlet.
Just clarification, when you said moved to issue, resolved to issue, they didn't adopt the moratorium, right? Or did they?
They, they have a public hearing set for the moratorium. The legislation would be retroactive to October 30th, the meeting where they discuss this.
Okay, go ahead.
So there's no moratorium in place currently?
Not yet.
Yeah, so, so the request for proposals that Greg and I had worked on has become the part and parcel to the town board's moratorium in that the town board is concerned about development occurring, business development occurring right now, other than that which is in relation to needs for fire and safety improvements or within structures that are less than 3,000 square feet. They are concerned, you know, they want to create more flexible zoning for our commercial areas, which is reflected in the RFP that Greg and I worked on. And they want to give some time for that work to occur before other building permits are issued in that area, other than for fire safety and in buildings less than 3,000 square feet. So according to the town code, any legislation needs to be referred to your board.
Right.
This is a referral to you to discuss and to comment on if you so choose.
So this would mean that starting, if it's adopted, that as of October 30th, any new applications coming in after that date would not be processed?
If they were greater than 3,000 square feet.
Correct, there are exemption, right, for under 3,000 square feet and fire and safety, you know, public health. Exceptions. There's also, as required in a moratorium, there's also a relief valve. So if someone comes in and they need to have their application processed for whatever reason, they're going to make an application to the town board for an exemption if they meet the standards.
Has this date, which has transpired by a week, has that date been published so people would know?
Yes. Well, it is, a public hearing has been set for this, for this, as required. Yes, the document is part of that public hearing. We have copies of both the notice of public hearing as well as the draft legislation that is before you in our office at our counter. We've spoken with a couple of property owners about this already. Other property owners who are not affected by this. There hasn't been any pushback to date?
The other part, too, is, so for the applications that are under 3,000 square feet and have to proceed for, you know, public safety reasons, fire reasons, or anyone that's granted an exemption from the town board, those applications, when they do proceed, proceed at their own risk. There's a chance that while they're proceeding with their application, zoning may change because the applicable requirements are at the time of approval, not at the time of submission of the application. So there's a notice in the moratorium to applicants that that's at their own risk.
So has the, the landowners within the boundaries of the district, have they been individually notified of the public hearing on this subject?
I'm not aware of the town clerk's notification procedures. I don't know if we send out a code read or anything.
It's not required.
It's not required, so.
I don't know if the town board asked for it or not.
Curious about that.
And the proposals, I understand it is for-
But you said you have, I'm sorry, but you said you have, you have met with some of them.
We have discussed this with some of the property owners who-
But not all?
But not all of them. Again, you know, we are the building department. People come in, they ask questions, they want to fill out applications.
Rather than you making an outreach to people, this is in response to people coming in.
Correct, we have made no outreach to people.
It's different, okay.
It is not required by the code. We're happy to do so if directed by the town board.
Be sure there's no selective-
No, no, no. And I think it's important for you to understand as well, any applicant who currently has an application being processed as of the October 30th date, they are grandfathered as well.
Right.
So.
Right.
Anything that is occurring right now is-
So it's proposed to be a six-month moratorium with the possibility of another six-month extension of the town board's so desires and needs the additional time. And I think that, you know, the basis for this, as I understand, has been in motion for some time. And we have the comprehensive plan, we had discussions with the town board, our joint meetings. Really, it's not that much of a surprise. We have these things going on and this gives the town the time to put together a plan, seek, you know, put out an RFP, get ideas in connection with these global issues and global plans that we're developing. So I think we really have a pretty good basis. So I understand that there's no notice requirements, but at the same token, we've been working at this for some time. And anyone who's really been paying attention at all should be aware.
And there are notice requirements, just not to individual property owners. So there's public notice placed in the newspaper, all of the, you know, standard public notice requirements for the adoption of a local law.
So it's also, there is also the opportunity for the landowners to participate in this process in the next six months in developing the plan, to be sure that they're interested representatives.
Absolutely.
The only substantive issue or question I would raise, and it really is with the RFP, I think the proposed legislation is fine, I don't have any issues at all. But with regard to the RFP, and this is also echoed from a conversation I had, as much as I could hear her whispering through the coughs from Sheila, is, I have some concerns, she shares the concerns, that in the RFP that we even start to talk about for and five-story and greater than five-story structures, it just seems to me, this one person, that that is really inconsistent with the, with what this hamlet is. And we start to move on to a more of a city feel. And I wonder, I don't wonder, I really am of the opinion that the underlying infrastructure is inadequate, both traffic, sewage, et cetera, to even contemplate that. And if we start to invite questions or comments or proposals, we start to get, I think, some inertia built in that area. And I, I think, consistent with what we're seeing in other towns, in Pleasantville, for example, everything is being limited to, excuse me, three stories. And that's what our code is, and I don't think that that's something that we should change.
So I didn't, I didn't know that this would be the subject for our discussion, but I completely agree. And I think that we're on record of, in a conversation with a joint meeting with the town board on this particular issue and the process you go through with the RFP should, should be looking for and how the problem or the opportunity ought to be framed, right? And I agree completely with Bob about this. It seems to me that, in fact, in my interpretation of the approved master plan or comprehensive plan, whatever we're calling it, same document, no matter what we call it, that inherent in that is, is a village hamlet scale development for the, for the hamlet. And anything that begins to approach the kinds of heights that Bob just mentioned, it seems, it seems to me are not, are not in concert with that. And it's, to me, it's sort of hard to say that, well, gee, we are going to go ahead and establish a moratorium in furtherance of the comprehensive plan objectives and then put out an RFP that has, to my way of thinking, has a scale of development which is in fact not in concert with the, with the comprehensive plan. So I imagine we'll be working that out and sort of massaging that and see where we go with that.
Maybe I could just add a little.
Sure.
The RFP is not to developers, the RFP is to consultants. And in the RFP, it asks the consultants to look at a range of low, medium, and high. We had talked about it, when you just say low, medium, and high, nobody has any idea, you know, high to some people could be 20 stories and high to some people could be three. So we didn't want to just go and say low, medium, and high. So that's why we put in a range, just to give them an idea. I think low is two, a range for scale. So low, I think, was two to three. I think mid was three to four. And high was four to five, or something like that. So it was just an incremental thing. So when the, when the consultants are studying density, with density comes traffic, infrastructure, all the other things, zoning, all the other things that come with it. That way, all the boards have the opportunity to look at it and say, okay, if we do low, these are the impacts. If we do high, these are the impacts. And if we do medium, these are the impacts. Because everyone right now is speculating on what the impact is on a high, low, and medium. None of us really know, we all have inherent thoughts. But none of us can sit here right now and say, if you build a four-story building, it's going to cause X, Y, and Z traffic, it's going to do X, Y, and Z taxes, it's going to do X, Y, and Z of infrastructure. So right now, we're just asking consultants to give. And I will end it with, if you go back 100 years, every single Westchester community has four, five, and six-story buildings that were built. Chapukah, no. But the surrounding communities all have these taller buildings that were built in the 20s and the 30s. And then there was a drop and everybody got afraid of height and they're all sort of pushing things down. We're not introducing height again, we're just asking the consultants to give us the data. So the board, all the boards, actually, just have the information in front of them.
So, I don't want this to get too esoteric, because hopefully there'll be time for this kind of conversation. But I, I disagree on the traffic question. There have been traffic studies that have been done that pertain to the street improvements, right? And we have all of those numbers, I believe, on what the current background traffic is. I mean, all those intersections were looked at. There are planning standards and traffic standards, there are trip generation rates that are in the books for every land use, for apartments, for commercial, for industrial, for retail, for office. There are numbers that are available that are tied to the amount of development.
That are very old and antiquated and are not with today's standards.
I don't know whether that is true. And I, that's a statement, I don't know whether it's true or not. But none, yes, there are, we have new ideas about how you can, you can share traffic numbers. I mean, you can share parking, you can, you can mix them and phase them depending on. But that is also a knowable calculation also. I actually think that within a week, you could have one of our traffic engineer, not our staff engineers, but one of our traffic consultants, sit down with those numbers and come back and tell you, this is how many more cars you can have in the hamlet, traveling through the hamlet. I believe this would be true, I could be wrong, but I've done this for living on some-
I'm not going to scream with you.
So you could, you could do that and come up with a number of cars. Then, before you reach level of F intersection, before you get to the point where it's just not, it's not a hamlet anymore, it's like locked up the way many of these towns around us are during certain times of the day, and I don't think we want that. So you come up with that number and then from that, you can say, okay, we can take, if you want a mix of, if you really want a mixed use in the hamlet, with residential, with maybe some attractions, we've talked about sports, there are other things you could do with, with retail, maybe a sparing of office, you could put together a formula that will tell you how much density, right, the town can handle it, handle. Rather, and I made, I made this point in our joint meeting, rather than just throwing it open and saying, okay, let's just, let's just throw stuff against the wall that, that we're just going to have to come back and analyze anyway. It seems to me you can put boundaries on that, like, we really don't, we can save five stories, but I don't think we really want five stories. I don't think we do.
Well, that's you. There are other people in town that might love five stories.
No, I went through the comprehensive plan process. Nobody said we want five stories. Everybody said we want a low scale.
Not everybody, don't use words like everybody. I was at most of those meetings and I did most of those little stickies and put them on the wall. And not everybody said that. A percentage of the people voiced their views. You're saying me and everybody. Those are your views, Tom, they're not the views of everybody.
All right, all right.
And the RFP, and the RFP is just asking the consultant to give information. That's all it's asking.
Let me, let me just say something. I should not have used the word everybody. But the consensus, the consensus was, we don't want five-story buildings in our hamlets. And that was, what I understood, that that consensus was legislated and that's how we got the master plan. Now, I know it doesn't say not five stories. I know it doesn't say that, but it does talk about a scale of development, which I think most of the people would say, gee, that's not what we, what we thought. Now, I know we'll find out through this process, but I'm suggesting it's an unnecessary step in the process. And it would better, it would be better, be quicker, it would be, it would be more productive if we sort of focused a little bit closer on what I think, as a consensus, the vision of the town, of the hamlet might be. Now, you can disagree with that, and I know there are people on town board who disagree with that. But I'm just trying to get to a conclusion, which is quicker, has less turmoil, and we end up with something that is reflective in the principles and the policies of the comprehensive plan. And I know you're saying it's only for consultant. I understand that, and that's good, that it's not a developer RFP.
Oh, no, it's definitely, it's just, yeah, it was just first things off.
And I think a critical component of the RFP is development of the secret information and environmental impact statement, which will consider all of the utilities, all of the infrastructure, the traffic, the circulation, all of those aspects for each of the levels of development that can be obtained.
But I agree with Tom. I, I think that the comprehensive plan is the consensus, that is our directive. It speaks in terms of scale, it speaks in terms of buticolic nature of the town. And I just think that the medium and high, now that I understand what that is, is just inconsistent and it becomes a diversion and it's just going to spend unnecessary time, effort, money, thought in a direction that I think the consensus is quite clear, was set forth in the comprehensive plan. My recommendation would be for this board to draw a memo, you know, take a vote on it, but to send a memo to the town board and say, we strongly suggest that you, even to the consultants, keep it consistent with what the scale is that we've talked about in the comprehensive plan, that we've talked about for many years in this, in this hamlet. And I just think, if you're going to start spending all this time and effort, not just on traffic, but you're doing something that's never going to work anyway. We're never going to get the sewage capacity approved from Yonkers to put in five-story buildings in this hamlet. It's never going to happen. So why are we going to spend our time even asking about this and studying it when it's a, it's a nonstarter? I mean, it's just, I mean, that's just one aspect. You have Con Edison saying that we have reached our maximum capacity for electrical power. We're going to have to start turning down applicants. We have to understand that there's more than going on just in our hamlets, regional as well. And I just think, I mean, we can do it, we can certainly study, it's just only with consultants. But I think it's just, it's spinning our wheels and we've done this so long, for such a long period of time. We've got this great plan, we've got it approved, let's execute on the plan. Let's not go off on new diversions and say, well, what about five stories? What about greater than five? Let's see what that looks like.
There's another aspect of this, which I, this may be a little bit hyperbole, but I think there could be a lesson here, that we, I think, as a town should have learned on the Chapukah Crossing example, where there was a developer, this is the, this is the previous board, previous town board, but came in with a development proposal and it just took, it took that applicant forever to work through the town board's vision of what they wanted on that property. And the reason why it took forever was because the town board essentially didn't have a vision for the property. And they were being in a reactive mode rather than a proactive mode. And that took six, seven years, resulted in a lawsuit. And finally, a guy with this current town board and the one previous to this town board got worked out to a conclusion, which I think is, I think is a pretty good one, given where it started. And my fear is that if we open this up and say to put together a developer RFP that says, just tell us what you want to do, that it's, it's the invitation for that process all over again. And I think that that's, it's, if we want to be proactive and actually do something in the hamlet, we ought to be proactive rather than being reactive. And I know that getting a consultant onboard to help us sort through those things is important. I know it's an important first step, I agree with that. But I think that we ought to be putting boundaries on this and declaring what we want to have happen through this process, rather than not. And I remember sitting in the, in the town board and there were declarations, well, let's just, let's just put a developer, let's just talk to developers and see what- let's just, let's just put a developer, let's just talk, talk to developers and see what they would do here.
That's not what, what this is about.
I know that's not what this is about.
I just want to make that clear.
I, I, I know that, but I know that that's also a, that's, that's also one attitude about how to do this, and I think that that's a mistake.
I get it.
And that attitude remains, I believe, so I just-
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Not, not to my knowledge. I was instructed to work with Greg to put together an RFP to look at rezoning the specific zones in the Chappaqua hamlet related to business use.
No, I, I understand, that's what you, I understand that.
Yeah, so, so I just want to make that clear.
Officially, officially, that's the way we're going, and that's great.
I, I think that, that Tom and, and Bob, I, I agree that it should be based on the comp plan. We should recognize, we should fact-check, but we should recognize that new electrical capacity is very low, and there may be other issues in the infrastructure arena that have to be considered, which tends to make me think we should be sticking to the comp plan and not go beyond it until some of the other major problems are either fixed or somehow overcome with some new inventions or miracles. So I think that's, that's my thought. And I don't think that, that the consultants should focus at least a significant portion of what they're going to do on the, the bases laid out in the comp plan, and recognizing, you know, the capacity restraints that should either be studied more, or dealt with in some fashion. And that anything that goes beyond what's in the comp plan, you know, for comparison purposes, I wouldn't mind seeing, but it shouldn't be the focus of what the consultants are doing. They should say, well, this could look grandiose, this could be this, but then they have to outline a broader panoply of, of serious infrastructure problems that have to be resolved. And then, in, in section three, paragraph three, I don't, I don't mind at all that the moratorium is extended for six months, but I suggest that we put in that the town board has to give one month in advance notice of any extension, you know, with the intent that if builders were thinking, oh, the moratorium's going to be over, I'm going to start spending money, they should be advised that, well, it may, may not be over, and they may want to hold, keep their powder dry.
Is that typically done?
It seems reasonable.
It seems reasonable to me, yeah. Is that something that we normally see in this kind of legislation, Jennifer, or Sabrina?
I have not seen it.
I have not seen it that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we still can recommend it.
Absolutely.
It doesn't have to be in the law, it would just be, then, maybe it's a common courtesy.
To provide advance notice, yeah.
Advance notice, I think it's, it's just so rude if we don't.
My, my comment, I have some really quick, brief comments. One, in paragraph two, that's sort of midway through, it says, first word in the line is development, development of housing that meets the needs of young people and older adults. It seems, I thought we were talking about a broader demographic in our objectives for the, the hamlet.
Paragraph two?
Paragraph two.
Mm-hmm.
It, we're, I mean, it seems like we were talking about other, another, a broader demographic. This seems like we're just talking about young people and old people. I thought we were talking about people, I mean, do you have to be young or old, to be a single adult, or to be a married couple without children, or to need affordable housing that might be available in a multi-housing situation? Those are all the people we talked about. I don't know how you, you sort of get the right language in there, but that's-
Well, it's just a variety of members of the community.
Yeah, we don't even have to specify, right.
I think maybe it's, to me, the word, or the phrase "in particular" makes it seem like, oh, that should be the main emphasis. I, I think the, you know, this is, we're looking at the needs of all people, but we cannot forget older people, young people, and disadvantaged people.
You could just say, people in need of, of multifamily housing.
Or needs of residents, or community, or-
Yeah.
Or just the changing needs of the community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That covers everybody, yeah.
There you go. Good. And then my other one was, there is a term here, which is, in quotes, second to bottom line in paragraph five on page two, "race of diligence." That must be, that's a term I'm not familiar with. Do you know what that refers to?
This is, Jen, I'm going to turn to you on that.
Race of diligence by those seeking-
Where is it?
It's kind of, it's just alluding to the fact that, um-
It's the paragraph five?
Paragraph five, second to last line. It's alluding to the fact that the moratorium is meant to preserve the status quo and prevent sort of a, a race to submit your applications in advance of the enactment of new legislation so that-
Actually figure that out, but I'm not familiar with the term. I'm sure that most people aren't. If, if there's another way to say that without using a-
Race.
Well, a race of diligence, it's, it might be familiar to people in the profession, but not to the general public, so-
So it's getting it under the wire. That's the, that's the layman's definition.
Yeah, instead of a race, just say, prevent, prevent those seeking to obtain approvals before new, just take out the phrase, "race of diligence."
I like that.
Can you repeat that, Tom?
I just take out the phrase, "race of diligence," and-
Just to prevent those seeking.
Yeah, I think you have to, to prevent those-
A race of diligence, and the word "by."
Yeah, "by" should go.
A.
Prevent those seeking to obtain-
A race of diligence.
And prevent those seeking to obtain approvals.
Take out "a," "race of diligence," "by."
Just do it. That's simple.
To prevent a-
That's, those are my comments.
Prevent those to prevent those-
Prevent applicants seeking to obtain approval.
Yep. Does that make sense? Seeking to obtain-
I would say, prevent applicants from seeking-
To prevent those seeking to obtain-
It's not just applicants, though.
Oh, okay.
We don't call, a building permit, ab-
It's not an applicant?
No, it's a, usually a homeowner or contractor applying for a building permit. We don't use applicant.
Oh, okay.
I, I think, prevent those seeking to obtain approvals before new conditions and requirements are established.
Fine.
I think that is adequate.
Yeah.
Those are my comments.
Greg, any comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Did you have any more to add? Just that one? Okay. Okay, so we'll draw a memo with those changes.
Draw a memo, and go to two for, is this something that the entire board wants to look at, or is it per the chair's discretion?
Chair's discretion, my friend.
Yep. Do we want to say anything about the RFP, or no? We have mixed opinions, mixed thoughts.
No, I think do a letter, do a no, just from you three.
Okay.
That's all. It's okay, we can do that, all right?
So I'll send you my comments.
Yeah.
No, the planning board can, absolutely. I mean, I, I emailed, the town board is discussing the RFP. I think that if the planning board has opinions and, and responses, feelings about the RFP, they should be heard, you should put together a response. Janice can, can draft the response. You should pass a motion to accept the letter, so it's an official document of the planning board, and it is submitted to the town board. I do not know the town board's schedule for updating and release of the RFP. I distribute it for comments. You have given substantial comments tonight. I will, you know, when you submit that letter to the town board, they will consider those comments.
I think that's good, so, um, I'll, we give our comments to Bob, and he can-
Well, Janice took notes on what you were talking about. Do you want her to draft it, or Bob would you prefer drafting it?
Well, no, there's more. There's, there, that was, I mean, there's more than that, so just need to go through it. I actually haven't read it yet. I'm just responding to the RFP.
He's prescient, you see, he came up with comments without reading it, and that is amazing.
Well, I was told what was in it. I was listening to the conversation. So I, I just need time to, to read it, and then to respond to whoever, somebody should assemble it.
I sent out the email, and I sent you the document.
I have it.
If you have, if you, if you want to track change the document, you want to send me just comments on the document, you send them to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay? If the board wishes to do something as a board in a formal sense, to communicate with the town board, then it needs to be done here.
Yep. I, I think we should do that myself.
The latter.
Yeah, the latter.
I think so, too.
So I think that would be better, more effective. And, and I think we should note, you know, it's not necessarily unanimous, and, and these are, you know, three of us felt this way, four of us actually, because Sheila felt the same way. And I'll send her, I'll draft something, and I'll send it around, and you guys take a look at it.
Yeah, I think that's best.
Okay? And if you have anything else that you want to add, you know-
Or delete.
Please, yeah, or, or delete. Absolutely no pride in ownership. Good. All right, we're done with that, so we have now the other changed-
Do we have a motion on the moratorium to send that, um, those comments?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jennifer. We have now the, the accessory apartment proposal, change in law, and this is to remove what was deemed to be a hardship that was really frustrating applicants.
So all we did on this was strike what was in blue?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what the town board is proposing, yes.
Bigger picture.
So they concluded that this was causing applications to, to fail, or lack of applications. So by removal of this, this additional condition, they felt that we might see more accessory apartment applications in the single-family resident zones.
What the condition was doing, it was taking what would otherwise be an area variance and converting it into a use variance. And as you probably know, use variances are extremely difficult, rare to, to obtain.
Right.
So it was, it was really, it's a bar to-
So this takes that hurdle away?
Yep. It was deemed to be a very considerable hurdle. Right? And so we're all?
Yeah, so I'm on board with this.
I'm good with it.
Yep. Everyone else? So we'll have draw, a, a quick memo. Is there a motion then to draft a memo supporting the change in law? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have now the request for an extension, brandy wine. And this is what, an extension for, a head circle, this, the tree removal permits, which seem to have lapsed, so they need an, an extension on that. And the building permit, they're only looking for an extension to November 10th? Or is that when the date is expiring?
That's when they're expiring.
Ah, so they need, okay.
It's in ahead of time.
Yes, both cases.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're getting good at this.
[laughing].
Is there a limit to how many times something can be extended, or you can just keep on extending?
Well, this is, this application is actually an example of that there was a limitation. This is a whole new application, again.
Right, it's a whole new guy.
Yeah. So it's within reason.
It is within reason.
And, and he's, I think they're working, working along, right, due diligence, making some progress?
As far as I'm concerned, they submitted all the planning board resolutions and conditions. You sign up on all the plans.
Okay.
They're just still not completed with the sites, and I don't believe they've gotten all their BP's issued to them.
You know, in, in fairness, this is not an easy site to develop, so-
No, it's not, they're very difficult sites.
Yep. So is there a motion to grant the extension that's been requested? Extensions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have minutes, minutes of October 2nd, 2018. Anyone, any changes? Amendments?
Um, I wasn't here, so I scanned it, I, did we, did you guys discuss the, um-
So we, we can't adopt those because Sheila's not here.
And I wasn't there either.
Yeah.
Really? So nobody was here?
No, just-
Well, you and I were-
Sheila is not here, I got it.
Right, so they don't have three, they only have two.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We can adopt it then, Jennifer?
Yeah, unless Bob can say that he's reviewed the video and reviewed the minutes and-
Go to the tape.
No, he hasn't done that.
Yeah.
I watched the video.
I have, I have a question. I note in here that, you know, the town environmental coordinator said there's a lot of septic systems failing over in that area. And, you know, I remember that, that the septic systems had circles drawn around them as to their area of influence, which extended over into other properties. And so I know we talked about, you guys talked about what happens with the, you know, the infiltration systems for stormwater, but did you talk about the septic systems in the same way?
No, the septic systems were further away.
So their circle didn't go over?
Yeah, right. That was-
That's good.
There was one question, though, Jennifer, there was something here on page eight, where we had expressed your intention to review tree preservation. This was with, with regard to removal of-
Yeah.
Invasive species, and whether it counted the same?
Yeah, and I, I, the next day, oh, I should turn this off. The next day, I, I sent an email to Steve, and he took that information, and he's working with the applicant.
Okay. What was the conclusion? Does it count?